Good evening and welcome to the October 30, 2017, meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jay, you get to take the roll one more time?
I'll take the roll one more time and I'll see how I do with Mr. Beely's name this time. Mr. Dupury?
Here.
Ms. Hendrickson?
Here.
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Taffellos?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Beely?
Here.
Ms. Augen?
Here.
All right. Full house.
Full house.
Next item is approval of minutes from the October 10, 2017, meeting.
Second?
Second, any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number four, the planning board will conduct a public hearing to receive comment on the proposed amendments to Chapter 405, the zoning ordinance, to amend the ordinances for gender-neutral content. Would you introduce this, Jay?
I don't think it takes much more of an introduction than what was given right there in the title, but that's exactly what this is. Our ordinance committee has been working with our assistant town manager to go through all the town's ordinances and looking at, there's a lot of reference to his or he as being positions, and so they're looking to make that a gender-neutral content throughout our ordinances. And the shoreland zoning ordinance, actually, I'm sorry, we're starting with the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance is one of the ordinance that any changes require this board to hold a public hearing on, as is the next public hearing, the shoreland zone, which is essentially the same item, but obviously a different ordinance. So, the proposal really calls for where it says his, it would say his slash her, or he, it will say he slash she, and so on, like that. So, with that, all I have to offer at this point.
Thank you, Jay. With that, I will open the public hearing on this item. Do we have any takers for gender-neutral ordinance language? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any board discussion on this? Yes, Rachel?
There are some times when a PhD in English comes in handy, and this is one of them. The use of the he slash she in English is actually going out now, and we are apparently in the position of wanting to put it into our ordinances. Instead, the Oxford English Dictionary, Merriam-Webster's, the Associated Press, and the, if you can think of the name, one of the grammarian societies, all have endorsed the word "they" or "their" as singular, gender-neutral pronouns, so that we no longer need to deal with the decision, do we say he, she, hers, his, and essentially render incomprehensible language in ordinances. I recommend that this go back to ordinance, and that the word "they" or "their" be put in as appropriate.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll second that. I think it's a, it's definitely, that'll take care of it.
Susan seconded that. So, process question for you, Jay. Is this, are we to understand that this is something that is happening across town documents more broadly?
It is.
Or are there other committees or boards that are providing feedback on this as well?
So, as far as I understand it, everything has generated through our ordinance committee, and, boy, you know, the number of ordinances, I'd say it's probably in the order of 50 or so. But these are the only two that require a public hearing by an outside body. My understanding is council's health first reading on the changes, sort of as a, sort of a wholesale, holistic approach, if you will. They didn't go through, sort of, all 50 themselves, but, so, yeah, I believe you would be the only board probably providing feedback. I can't say that with absolute certainty, but...
It's maybe fortuitous to pick the one with the English PhD on.
That's right.
I don't know if others have comments. I certainly, and I think I probably speak for everyone, saying that we certainly support gender-neutral pronouns. And I also support anything that makes the ordinances as readable as possible, and so to the extent that it is possible to get rid of, kind of, clunky constructions, and that it's consistent with best practices beyond this room, then I would definitely support that. Anyone else? All right.
And typically, the board will, sorry, just before you close that, provide a recommendation, and so that would either be a recommendation to the council, this would be going back to council for their public hearing, and then ultimately a sec reading. So, a recommendation might be a recommendation to approve as received, to approve with conditions, or to deny. Those are really, sort of, the three typical ways of going about it, and it sounds like we're talking about approve with conditions or reconsideration, at least.
I guess reconsideration would be the way to put it.
Okay.
I think that would be the concise way to...
With the instructions.
...articulate it. Suspect this next item will look very similar, but it is technically a different item. So, I'll introduce item number five. The planning board will conduct a public hearing to receive comment on the proposed amendments to Chapter 405(c), the shoreland zoning ordinance, to amend the ordinances for gender-neutral content. And everything you said except about the shoreland zone...
There you go.
...ordinance, right? Okay. And presumably, our recommendation would be similar?
Yes. I would appreciate it if the recommendation I made for the prior ordinance be included for this.
All right. I suppose I should formally open a public hearing. Book here, so if anyone does have any comment on this, feel free to come on up. Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. Is there any further comment on this one? A little change of pace for us. All right. Do we need to, for the record, do we need to...
I think it would be, just for the record, to make what your recommendation is.
So, the board is recommending approval with instructions to reconsider the actual mechanics per what Ms. Hendrickson described.
Thank you. Minutes won't last, something that wasn't actually said.
As we'll do it right. Thank you. Item number six. Unitil Northern Utilities, Inc. requests a site plan review and shoreland zoning review for a gate station on Eastern Road, map R-73, Lot 18. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as you just noted, this is an application by Unitil for a gate station, which I'm sure they can describe better than I will be able to, but as I understand it, takes, sort of, their transmission gas system and puts it into, converts it so it can go into a more local distribution system. This is, project is proposed in the Resource Protection District, which is part of our shoreland zoning, and is considered an essential service. So, within our shoreland zoning, we have certain standards that need to be reviewed by this board for this activity. The shoreland zone identifies the planning board as the permitting authority for this type of activity, and so staff comments laid out a number of those for you to look at. And I think, really, the essence of staff comments are really, sort of, around ensuring the board is comfortable with, sort of, the buffering and landscaping with the proposal, as well as lighting. We'll note that the shoreland zone typically requires a minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet, but the applicant has been before our Board of Appeals and received approval for the 16,000 square foot lot that they're proposing to put this essential service on. So, I just want to make that note for the record, that that process has been completed. So, with that, Mr. Chair, like I said, you should have received some staff comments, and I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, and I'll hand it over to the applicant or their representative.
Good evening. My name's Sean Donahue. I'm with VHB of South Portland. Also with me here this evening is Bob Shumrick of Unitil. He's the project manager for this project, and David Woodward of VHB. Dave is the senior project manager and landscape architecture for the project. So, just briefly to introduce the project, it is, as noted, a natural gas facility to interconnect the natural gas transmission system that currently exists in the Eastern Road right-of-way with the local distribution system. The facility would include two fenced areas, the first being a mainline valve facility, shown here on this plan, so this, heading on this direction, sort of, to this side of the plan, would be heading out towards Eastern, to Black Point Road. This way heads down to the Eastern Trail, just to get you orientated there. So, there would be a 15-by-25-foot fenced facility with a crushed gravel surface, an above-ground facility, piping, it would be fenced. That would serve as an interconnection point between the existing natural gas transmission pipeline to the gate station facility. From this point, there would be subsurface piping to connect the mainline valve to the gate station facility. The gate station facility would be 45 feet by 105 feet in area. It would be fenced in with a crushed gravel surface. It would have landscaping and a decorative fence buffer as well. And we've got the facility described in more detail in the application, which you all have available to you, so at this point, I'll let you ask the questions you may have of us.
Thank you. First, we do have the opportunity for a public comment, not a formal public hearing, but if anyone does have any comments they'd like to make on this, feel free to come on up. All right, no takers. Nick, do you have anything on this?
Not a whole lot. I'll see if my colleagues spark anything, but not a whole lot of that here.
Roger?
I guess the only, I don't really have much either, other than the two, the two points brought up on the staff's comments. One was the fenced-in area and the necessity of having barbed wire, barbed wire on top. How critical is that?
That is really an essential, critical piece of keeping a deterrent from people entering the gate station facility or the valve facility unauthorized. It's really needed for safety purposes.
And the other, the other thing that came up was the 20-foot LED floodlight?
Yes, so there would be a light located over the scatter cabinet, which is for controlling the facility. It would be 20 feet off the ground, illuminated at a 35-degree tilt, so that would have it illuminating this area towards the yard, away from the residences that are being constructed over here and existing residences to the northeast along Eastern Road. The, sort of, lighting area would include the yard and some of the adjacent area around the yard. There is a photometric plan included in the application.
Okay, so that won't, that won't give us excessive glare, you know?
It's not a work light, it's, sort of, a safety illuminating light, so it's not intended to produce a wide range of light. The light footprint, as shown in the photometric plan, covers the yard, would extend a little bit into the Eastern Road right-of-way, and then out along the perimeter of the fenced area.
Susan?
I'm assuming that if anybody needs to come and service this, the parking would be in the established parking lot that already exists?
So, service vehicles, you can see that there's a gravel access drive that would tee in, so the service vehicles for, you know, under maintenance and operation purposes would pull into the access drive. There is a gate here that would allow them to enter and park here.
Okay. Just a little, when it comes to, anything that has to do with architecture or landscaping, I get fluffy. Looking at these photos, there are three different colors. Which one are we using, all three, or?
Well, that's a good question.
One is saddlewood, I think it says saddlewood. One says headwood, and one says nothing. Whatever you'd like to call it.
One moment, we're looking for the answer.
At first, I thought it was going to be different on different sides. That doesn't make any sense to me, that we use different, on different sides, so, you know, this is a matter of particular, we would like to know what we're going to get.
In terms of the color?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you, if you can add that as a condition, that'll be fine.
Yeah, we can, we can come back to that, we don't need to...
We don't need to take up time for it.
Okay. It would be intended to resemble a natural wood color, whether it would be at the lighter or darker end, I couldn't say just now.
It's not be confusing. Also, just to make sure that I'm on the right page, when we get around to what will be the back of this, closest to the marsh area, it's going to be black vinyl clad?
That's right.
As opposed to wood?
So, there would be black vinyl clad fencing, or chain-link black vinyl clad around the whole facility, and then that would be faced with the Cambium series decorative fencing on...
What would be, all of it, all the way around?
On three sides, so the three sides would be this side, the one along Eastern Road, and then on the north side here. This side would remain open, I shouldn't say open, there would be the, you know, the chain-link fence, the black vinyl clad chain-link on this side, but not the wood decorative type.
And then lastly, it's a, I don't know what's going on here, landscaping question. White fir, I'm not familiar with white fir, is it the same thing as white pine?
Fir would be different than pine, but I'll let Dave elaborate.
That's why we have him here.
It's not the same as white pine.
Okay, because my problem is that white pine drops all of its lower, and this will not do that.
No.
That's all I really care about. Thank you. I'm all set.
Robin?
So, you're very close to the wetlands here.
That's right.
How close will your disturbed area come to the protected natural resource?
The disturbed area comes quite close to it, but does not interact, so it would be within a few feet of the boundary.
But tell me about the erosion-sedimentation controls that you'll have in place during construction, at least.
Yep, so there would be a line of silt fencing, stake hay bales, silt fencing as needed around the edge of the disturbance footprint, which essentially comes along this line here. As it approaches the wetland, goes around the wetland, and then wraps back around, so all of that downslope area would be enclosed by stake hay bales or stake sil, or silt fence installed.
Because you're so close, I'm gonna, I guess I have a question for staff that I'd like to request double sediment barriers.
Double, a double layer.
And I'd like to have a detail in here of how they're going to be keyed in, whether it's the hay bales or the erosion-sedimentation control, because, what's your total disturbed area?
The total disturbed area, well, the total lot area is 13,440 square feet.
Right.
So, the disturbed area would be...
Half that?
In that, well, I'd say a little more than half, because the grading comes close to the limits of the lot area. But we do have a detail in the plan.
Okay, did I miss it?
It's possible, but we have it right here, and you may be able to answer some of those questions. There's an inset showing the silt fence detail here, staked in.
Okay. So, it's silt fence, but there's not the hay bale that you're talking about, so that's two separate structures, so...
That's correct.
Okay, so, do you have a detail for the hay bale?
We don't, and, you know, when I said silt fence, I meant, sort of, silt fence or hay bale as needed. Oftentimes contractors will, sort of, put what is most appropriate for the site.
Okay. So, do we know what contractor it will be? Will it be Unitil and their, and their staff, or will it be subdoubt?
So, they do subcontract the work, the gas work, the live gas work is attended to by Unitil, but the construction work that does not involve live gas work is done by contractors that are working for Unitil.
Okay, so we'll have a subcontractor on site, we'll have Unitil on site. I guess I have a question for staff now. Angela, are you comfortable with asking for double sediment barrier due to the close proximity? Is it overkill? What other, is it, will there be a pre-construction meeting, all of the above?
Yes, I think we do pre-construction now for all projects, so that's something that we can talk, we can talk about during that. And if you want specifically, because this is, I would say, a wetland of special significance, most likely, and typically we would do that on, you know, streams or others where they need the double wall of protection. So, I don't think that's a far stretch where this is such a significant amount of wetlands.
And I'd like to know, too, that because you're in the shoreland zone, that means that you need to have a DEP, a certified contractor that's been trained by the DEP in erosion and sedimentation control within the shoreland zone, so if you could provide that evidence to the town as well, that would be greatly appreciated.
Sure.
All set?
Yeah.
Thanks. Rachel?
Yeah, I'd just like to go back to the fence and the barbed wire for a moment, and is the barbed wire to keep out people or critters?
People, yep. So, it would be a deterrent to any, you know, curious individuals that wanted to enter the facility, and, you know, barbed wire on the top of a chain-link fence is a pretty standard specification for any kind of critical energy infrastructure, you know, by comparison, say, like an electric substation, it's commonplace, and it's really there for public safety. It is a residential area, there are children around, there's more houses being built, so without that being there, it just really doesn't provide the level of deterrent that would be, you know, appropriate for a facility like this.
Is the barbed wire upright or slanted at an angle?
It's angled.
Oh.
Slanted outward, yeah.
Do you want me to clarify?
No, I think I got it. All right, yeah, I'm, now, I'm just, I'm good.
Thanks, Rick. Yeah, I don't really have anything to add. I agree with the concern voiced by Ms. Saunders on the proximity to the wetlands, and appreciate the sensitivity on your part to that as well. We agreed that we'll work out the details, or you can work out the details with staff to confirm the color of the fence, and that you're looking for, sort of, a natural look there. Bob, can you elaborate on this a little bit, in terms of whether another light would be needed?
When, as staff looked at the photometrics plan, it did seem to create quite a bit of light, sort of, in the, as we're looking at the plans, sort of, the right-hand corner. The photometrics plan seemed to go dark in the back half or more of the project, and I don't know if that was just the, it's hard to tell exactly what was happening with the photometrics plan, because it did seem to get, be pretty bright, and then the lumens seemed to drop right down pretty quickly, so...
And I just wanted to add, too, with the angle they were talking about, you know, obviously there's residents around, but we also talked a lot with the board about the glow that comes from O-Kil. There is ways to do both, there's ways to keep, get rid of that angle, but have a house-side shield, so that you can do, you can do both, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Is this what is meant by the first condition that you had sent around?
So, I guess that first condition was have it, be sure that the board had a discussion, and if the board's comfortable with the proposed, we can strike this condition and craft it as a waiver. At this point, yes, the way we crafted it was, given the board's general interest in ensuring that all lights are full cutoff, and I know in some past applications, when they've been close to the marsh in particular, the boards also had some other, that's been a consideration for...
I want to say thank you to staff for bringing it up, because I would have been very upset to have discovered that we didn't cover that when it was built, so thank you.
I would be not inclined to support a waiver, in that it's me that's usually bringing it up on behalf of the wildlife and habitat issues, so I would not necessarily support a waiver, but if staff feels like cutoff, there's appropriate blockage or cutoff based on lumina, the lumens, then we, I would trust, trust the staff to have that discretion, but I'm not generally in support.
Well, they're asking for, the condition number one is asking for it not to have, to have, make sure that it's properly angled to be full cutoff. Yeah, okay.
And I have the photometric plan here, so I can show you, sort of, where those, the lumens drop off.
You don't need to get into it sometimes.
You can bear with me just one moment while I get that out.
We don't need it.
Yeah, we, I don't think we need to get, I think we, I think we all, kind of, understand the basic dynamics in the issue. So, yeah, just to make sure, the language is a little bit confusing, but the condition as stated in the draft motion that I think everyone now has would be that the applicant worked with staff to come up with a full cutoff approach. Is that something that the applicant is prepared to work with staff on?
Again, Bob Shumrick of Unitil. Yeah, we were prepared, as Angela said, that to change the light, to have a back light, up light shield, and also to eliminate the tilt.
Okay, yeah, great, thank you. And thanks, Jay, for re-highlighting that for us, so to speak. All right, with that... Here? Yep, yeah, okay. All right. Doing this live, doing this live, all right. I move to approve the project titled "Unitil, Eastern Road Gate Station," proposed by Unitil Northern Utilities, LLC, as depicted on plan set prepared by Process Pipeline Services dated July 14, 2017, with the final findings and conditions. I'm not going to read all the findings, but they will be part of the record. Now, the first condition, coordinate final details to ensure lighting fixtures are properly angled to be full cutoff and to include house-side shields. Number two, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. Number three, final cover, final color of fence detail to be approved by town staff. And number four, provide double sediment details during construction, detail to be reviewed and approved by staff.
A second.
Have a second and further discussion?
Yes. Did we want to, there was a request for the contractor to provide, like, training certification?
Yeah, it's the contractor to, must be DEP certified?
Does that mean it's part of the conditions, or is that just part of the site, when you meet with them?
The pre-construction meeting?
If it's in the shoreland, is it?
That would have been my...
So, it's already required?
Yeah, it's required, and it'll be, we can bring it up at pre-construction meetings, certainly.
Okay. Thanks. Any other discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven. Matthew Chamberlain requests final subdivision approval for Yellow Birch Estates, 203 Holmes Road, Assessors Map R-23, Lot 16. Jay?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just noted, this is for a final subdivision review of White Birch Estates. The board actually granted preliminary approval of this subdivision back in October. This is a residential subdivision in the RF and October Protection Overlay District. Given the characteristics of the site, it does trigger our conservation subdivision design review criteria. So, the board has been through those items during the preliminary review process. So, just by way of sort of knocking the dust off, a few of the items that the boards looked at in considering this, one of the major elements have been around site access and coming in off Holmes Road. I know that was a point of discussion for the board that you've looked at. And their traffic engineer has made some recommendations for some improvements along the right of way to enhance those sight lines. Let's see. At this point, staff has sort of few remaining comments, and many of them are sort of around final technical details that I'm sure if you have questions, Angela would be happy to touch on. And then just some other final coordination of plan notes and location of street trees and such. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jay. We have the applicant here.
Yes, good evening. My name is Paul Gabois. I prepared the site plan that you have in front of you this evening, and Matt Chambers is also here. So, I'm here for any questions the board might have.
Okay. Nice concise presentation. Use the light while we have it. Any board comments or questions on this? Rick, do you have anything?
No, I looked it over and it's fine.
Okay. Rachel?
Yeah, I note that a letter came in from a member of the public with continued concerns about the condition of Holmes Road and the safety issues and a potential school bus stop. And I'm wondering if there's been any further thought about improvements that could be made along Holmes Road. I note, Jay, that you said... You said something probably profound and wise.
I appreciate that.
That improvements would be anticipated, but what are we talking about?
So, maybe I'll turn it to the applicant's engineer to describe what they're proposing.
Through the traffic report, but I believe what we're going to be doing is clearing a little shrub and scrub brush along the road and also adding a sign showing that there will be a new road entrance to that location. So, that's what I'm aware of that the traffic engineer came up with, kind of cleaning up some of the trees along the road and for better sight distance and putting a sign to show that there was going to be an intersection at that point.
Have you asked the school department about potential bus stops and where those stops might occur?
I have not.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin, do you have anything?
Just one question about the timeline. Could you let us know when construction will break ground?
Yep, I'll let Matt handle that one.
Do you?
Hi, thank you. If we get preliminary, uh, final approval tonight, my site guy is prepared to start cutting trees in the next seven days. We'll have the road built 100% this calendar year, and base coat will go down in the spring.
Okay. And maybe this one for Paul. How many stormwater features do you have again? And will any of them be constructed this winter?
We have two stormwater basins. I haven't really thought about the phasing of construction for those. I would anticipate that that would be at the same time that they're constructing the road.
Just if in your pre-construction meeting that you have with staff, if you could just be... Provide them with the sequencing of events. Thanks.
Thanks, Robin.
Yep.
Nick? Roger?
The only thing I have is I just want to... Is the sign on Holmes Road, is that confirmed? Is that going to be definitely one of the conditions?
Yep, that's part of the plan that they put together. And so, as everything else on the plan, where the lots are located, where the open spaces, that is part of the...
And that sign's going to be for traffic heading towards beach ridge?
Uh, I need to...
Or whatever, sock or...
If I can get this to open. Can get this to open up, I can demonstrate for you. But I believe the sign is... My system is not cooperating.
The applicant confirmed?
Yep.
I'm not 100% sure which direction that the engineer had specified it, but whatever it calls for is where we'll put it.
I'm thinking of when I was out there, it seemed to me that the danger was vehicles coming towards beach ridge because they're coming up around that bend versus coming...
Right. And that would be my synopsis as well. But whatever it calls for is exactly where we'll put it.
Are those yellow directional, you know, like curve?
They are going out. Holmes Road towards Broadridge.
Okay. All right. And then just one last thing is on the harvest plan. That's... You're talking primarily to pine trees.
Correct, yes.
Not the hardwoods.
The forester that went up to the property made a determination that generally the pine trees that are there are at the end of their natural life. And one place to go is to die and fall. So, he thought it would be best to start selectively removing some of those so that the end of growth of hardwood can get a little better hold. And that's why we're also going to be replacing on the street with the smaller caliber hardwoods.
Okay. All right. I'm all set.
Thanks.
I need help from staff. I'm getting a really funny feeling, and I've been around long enough that when it happens, I need to verbalize it. I'm not really convinced of the safety of that entrance. And the thing that came to us late, just before the meeting, pretty much reinforces what I've been thinking all along. We were there. It's busy. People go... The cars go by rapidly. I don't know what would be needed to ensure, and that's what I think I need to use, to ensure that at that curve, we've done everything that we can to make it as safe as possible. And I don't think removing vegetation's going to do it. So, I don't know what it is I want done. I don't want the applicant to have to go out and spend thousands and thousands of dollars. I don't know whether or not just widening the road at that curve would create the kind of margin of safety I'm looking for. So, if I'm making a mountain of a molehill, I really would appreciate being told that. And it does seem at the staff level that there's maybe some sophisticated, a little more sophisticated approach. I would appreciate knowing about it.
I don't know that staff has any great silver bullet for this one. We know their traffic engineer provided what they said would provide at least sight lines for 45 miles an hour, if I recall. Our peer reviewed traffic engineer reviewed their proposal and suggested that it met at least the sight distance standards. Beyond that, we really haven't had much discussion at the staff level about, you know, the sort of greater context of the street, of, you know, and what type of improvements might be made to make it more accommodating or what have you.
Because it sounds like your issue is more about those on the main road, because what they're addressing is taking a left or right out of the side street, which is why he's talking about doing, you know, cutting back the shrub and the swales and things like that so that they can see, so someone isn't jumping out in front of a vehicle that's moving fast. But it sounds like really the concern is maybe that the curve's along Holmes Road.
Right. That's much more like what I'm thinking, because if we are talking about this being a development that will have children, that will have a school bus stopping there, what's going to be happening as the buses goes... We don't know whether it'll be stopping on the road or coming down into the development at this point, do we?
No. And I think, I mean, to their point, for the school department transportation, they're not going to be able to really tell you that until there's actually children in that development to know where or when they stop.
Can we put something in there that says to watch for? I mean, I don't know what I'm after. It feels too loose to me. It doesn't feel as if we're being... We're asking for anything that's going to take care of what is potentially a problem. Now, I know we can't make everything 100% safe. I'm not a big fan of kids having to wear helmets when they climb trees, for example. But I see to be the... Yes.
I could help in any way.
Please help.
If anything gives you peace of mind, I like that the applicant has gone ahead and had their study, their traffic study conducted at a speed limit that exceeds what the actual speed limit of the road is. So, it's almost like the traffic study was based on what the traffic is traveling at, not necessarily what it's posted at. And then on top of it, if you do hit a development with a new development and there is a problem, we have enforcement and we've... I know I've seen them on Holmes Road before. And I think usually a message gets sent after a week or two of patrolling and people learn to slow it down a little.
I appreciate it. I think that this is just me saying every once in a while, because there isn't any specific thing that we can do, I don't say anything. But I'm uncomfortable, and I just hope the applicant will make sure that everything is done that can possibly be done to make that safe.
I'm a father of 11-year-old triplet girls.
I know you are.
I can appreciate...
Are they going to be living there?
Watching cars drive by the bus stops when they're flashing, so...
Okay. Okay. The only other thing I'm wondering is, is staff comfortable with the tree situation? For lack of a better word.
Yeah, I think we'll...
There is going to be... There is a plan.
They have suggested that they will put in street trees. We would sort of ask that we see the final location be determined on a plan, realizing that it may need to be field verified during construction. But it's much easier to be sure it's established on the plan set early, and that way, when and if one does need to get adjusted slightly, our town engineer can work with them on that. So, that would be a condition that staff has prepared, should the board be comfortable moving forward in that direction.
And the harvesting and referencing plan, has it been okayed by staff?
So, yep. And actually, the board had a bit of discussion around the harvest plan. I believe you missed the last meeting, but the board was comfortable with that. Staff has reviewed it.
I'm all set then. Thank you.
Thank you. See, I was just picking up briefly on the site access and the safety question. I wanted to note, just for the record, first off, that the letter that's been referenced here, or emails from Wally Fangler, we appreciate that input, and that'll certainly be part of the record. You know, with Susan and others we're alluding to, this sort of issue can be tricky because it's a case where the proposal meets the letter of everything in terms of visibility and everything else. And I think when it comes to that gray area, we each have... That sort of goes beyond that. We each kind of have our own thresholds. So, I definitely appreciate that concern and share that. I do appreciate the point made by Mr. McGee about the speed that was assumed in the analysis, because sometimes that's a... Often, I'd say that's something that we tend to pick at and say, well, nobody actually drives 35 miles an hour down that stretch. So, that was a valid point to make. And I guess I'm generally of the mind, sort of articulated by Nick, that it's something that I think people, everyone involved, needs to be mindful of, and town as a whole will need to sort of monitor it and take whatever action might be needed if there seem to be issues there. But I think the applicant's, you know, definitely done everything that they need to do to comply with the ordinances. So, we appreciate that. I think we've touched on the harvest plan pretty thoroughly, and that's been well vetted. So, beyond that, I don't think I have any remaining questions or issues, and we do have a motion here. I move to approve the project titled "Yellow Birch Estates," proposed by Matthew Chamberlain, as depicted on plan set prepared by Paul P. Gabois, dated October 7, 2017, with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. Once again, I will not read the findings, but they'll be in the record, pretty boilerplate. The waiver, given the limited number of lots within the subdivision and the dead-end road design, the waiver request to reduce the roadway width from 24 feet to 22 feet is approved. Conditions, number one, prior to the signing and release of the MYLR, the plan shall be revised to address the following. A, technical revisions to Plan Note 15 on Sheet 11. B, technical revisions to the detail associated with the embedded 15-inch wetland crossing culvert. C, specific locations for the proposed street trees are provided and approved by the planning department. D, the maintenance and inspection plan included in the plan set as Sheet 11 of 11 shall be provided as a separate document that could be included in any homeowners association documents, as they will have future responsibility for the proposed stormwater systems. Condition number two, prior to the release of the attested final subdivision plan to the applicant for recording at the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds, the applicant shall pay the traffic impact fees. And the third condition, a recreation contribution in the amount of $250 shall be paid on a lot-by-lot basis prior to the issuance of a building permit. And we actually do have a fourth condition, which is that prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Good luck. All right. We're shifting gears. Item number eight, Housing Initiatives of New England Corp. requests a site plan and subdivision review for Besse Commons 2 Senior Housing, One Besse School Drive, Assessors Map U-41, Lot 2. Jay?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just noted, this proposal is before you for an expansion at Besse Commons, which is the old Besse School, for an expansion out there. The site was initially approved back in about 2006, I believe it was, for the first phase of the development. Should be noted that the property that this is on is actually owned by the town, but the L-54, the applicant has a lease agreement that allows for this type of development and even contemplated a second phase of development. And so, staff has reviewed that lease and finds that this is consistent with that proposal and allowance, and so they're moving forward accordingly. We'll note that in addition to... That this is really... There's going to be a subdivision amendment component to this application, but really it's going to be our site plan review ordinance and criteria that will govern. I think we've had a number of projects like this recently, so the board should be fairly familiar with that process, where our site plan review ordinance standards get a little more in-depth in detail regarding sort of those details. Let's see. So, you will have received a series of staff comments from planning staff as well as Wood Earn and Kern, our peer reviewers, and Bill Bray, Traffic Solutions, looking at the traffic In particular, staff reviewed the plans. You know, there's still some details to be ironed out, but there seems to be, you know, we're heading in a pretty good direction with what's being proposed. Did just want to bring to the board's attention that some, really, in reviewing this application, staff would just bring to the board's attention and sort of the forefront of considerations for the impact to abutting properties. Though this is a residential use, it is obviously, you know, a large building, and there's some parking. So, ensuring that we have adequate buffering and sort of consideration of lighting, given some of the neighboring residential uses. And then I guess the other thing we want to bring to the board's attention has to do with their stormwater design, and maybe I'll ask Angela to weigh in on that. And then staff, I'll conclude staff's comments at this point, anyway.
Thanks, Jay. Angela?
Yep, there's a couple of...
Yep, there's a couple of, um, pretty technical comments in Woodern and Kern's, and then in staff comments, I have put a couple of more general, but it really shows that, um, I guess the highlight is that there is a slight increase of peak flow rates from the site, and so it's something that I know the board has been sensitive to in the past. We also, looking at how that's designed, I know it's an existing pond, but they're actually modifying the outlet control structure, so there's opportunities, I think, to, to maybe revisit that and, and how the system is, um, is set up, as well as looking at the rainfall data, which, um, not using the most current rainfall data currently, so that might change some of those numbers too. So, we just want to make sure that we have some back and forth, and it sounds like the applicant has already seen our, has talked about our comments and that are willing to kind of work through that with staff. But at this point, there are some, some technical loose ends.
I guess I just wanted, do want to note that staff did receive today a package of response to staff comments. We didn't have time to give those a thorough, thorough review, but again, as Angela just alluded to, clearly the applicant has seen those and has started to give those some due considerations of, I'm sure they'll highlight those, which they have questions about otherwise, and hopefully, most of them made sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll turn over to Ms. Taylor.
Thank you. My name is Cindy Taylor, and I'm the President of Housing Initiatives, but as part of our presentation tonight, Rick Shene, our attorney, is here and he is going to make a presentation on the ownership structure, just so that you understand how this is all going to come together. I also have George Levine from CWS Architects here with me, and Kurt Newfield, who is our civil engineer, who will speak about the stormwater directly. I'd like to just touch on some of our, our high points for our design. We have a rendering here tonight that, I think, starts to show you how we're trying to incorporate the design for Phase 2 with Phase 1, the materials, the brick, the white clavards, the, the very similar feeling that we have going on Bessey 1. The addition to the school, um, is going to be continued into our second building. I think that, um, you, as was noted in the presentation by staff, that we contemplated having a Phase 2 when we developed Phase 1, and so we actually created two lots. And, um, there were three lots in our original subdivision, because as part of the town parcel, we have control through a 99-year lease on, on two of those lots, one of which, uh, the one that the school sits on is 2.75 acres. And Lot 2 is 4.4 acres, and I think there was a mistake and, and I think those numbers were trans, just turned, uh, the 4.4, I think in the staff report came out as 4.14, and so I just wanted to clarify that in terms of actual. The, I think the important thing to note here, again, is we did have our wetlands mapped. We were using wetlands mapping in our original presentation in the plans that you, you've seen. I didn't realize how wetlands do change, but in fact, they do change, especially when you introduce controls on stormwater. And I have also learned in the last week how much more precise mapping of wetlands is with the GPS systems. So, we have that, um, you'll see that in the presentation tonight, and you'll see that in the final plan.
Cindy, we have a handheld mic that might make light a little easier for you.
Thank you. So, primarily what you see here in our rendering is what you'll see when you drive up the driveway. And so, our initial attempt to lay this plan out, both when we did our first phase in, uh, with Phase 1 and 2, and now, although we have tweaked the actual site plan quite a bit from our original, the idea is to create a porch-like front for people to really identify the front of this building. There's nothing worse than coming into a campus and not knowing where to go, so I think this will be visually very clean and very simple to tell where the front entrance is. The other very important issue for us was the, the site itself. This particular site that the building sits on is a flat baseball field, but the other part of the site is a rising hill. And so, I'm just going to show you this site plan that's, shows the landscaping rendered and so forth. But this is our entrance drive, and for any of you, I don't know if all of you have driven to the, what we call the front of Bessey Commons 1, but it's not the side that you see from Route 1, because the other side itself, you have a nice patio out there, we have a, a nice entrance, a nice drop-off facility, and so what we were trying to do is do the same thing here, where you actually come around a, a turn, and you have a perfect place for guests and residents to be dropped off. This is extremely important for a, a lot of our residents, because a lot of them use bus service, and we have our local bus that does services property. So, the other issue that became abundantly clear with Bessey 1, where that people would like to be able to, if their apartment is here, they'd like to be able to see their cars, they'd like to have as, as an immediate access getting into the building in the wintertime as possible, and so what we've done is we tried to create a focal point here with landscaping, focal point on this side where there'll be a nice patio, and then two entrances that'll be private entrances for the people that live here, so that they can park here and get into the building as quickly as possible. But the guest parking is here, and it's really important to provide guest parking for these people, because the last thing we want them to do is not to have people visit them. Some of our residents don't have family, but for those who do, we want to make it as convenient as possible, so we're going to reserve this for parking for guests, and they'll come immediately into the building. This end of the building will have our, our intercom system, so it will be a secured access. These will be keyed access for residents only. So, I've got one more plan I'd just like to share with you, and then I'm going to turn this over. And this plan is not as strong as I would like. Today, we had no power in our office, no access to our computers. But, um, this is a composite plan that Sightlines did for us. And it, and it's, it may be difficult to see, but this is the existing school, this is Route 1. This is the addition that drops down over the hill, and we use an elevator to get our residents to the community spaces that are basically in the front of the building. So, you come up this private drive, or it is now a public street. There's a T-turn, Hammerhead turn here for the public street. We actually get our frontage, the 75 feet of frontage on that T-turn. That was something that we had designed a long time ago when we had, when we created the two lots. And then we come off that with our drop-off to the building. But I also wanted to point out the fact that we've, we tried to get this entrance as close to this building as possible, without, without taking away from the parking that's currently serving these people. So, we've moved it as close to this lot line. This is our Lot 2 line right here. And so, we're going to have some shared parking. This will be the new parking. This is existing parking that goes with this building. We've actually lost a few spaces here. We've lost four spaces here. We're going to create five more that will go with Bessey 1. And then we'll have cross easements. But I, I think there's, um, one question that I have. In the TVC 2 zone, there is a, there's a discussion on a campus approach, where you have multiple buildings, and there's a discussion on the way that the buildings are sited with relevance to the street. We have taken the approach that this is more like a campus, and that the pedestrian access will be along this line. We actually have some great walking opportunities. Currently, our residents come out here, they come to Route 1 this way. They, they can come all the way around here. This is a great walking trail. They go down, they cross Route 1 at Sawyer, which is the safest place for them to get to the municipal park. We would anticipate the same thing here. So, we will create sidewalks that will come back around so that they can join in utilizing both buildings. Both these people are welcome to come to this one and vice versa. And then we have the continuous walkways. These woods are phenomenal. I'm, you can see, these are the new areas for the wetlands. But if you go down there, when I was growing up, this was the girl scout camp, and it looks exactly like that right now. I'd invite anybody to walk down there. It's absolutely beautiful. They do have wet vegetation, but it's not standing water, so if, this is all a hill, it all slopes back down to Commerce Drive, and, um, actually to the, um, development along the Old Eastern. But that being said, I, I wanted to point out that we have this pedestrian access that we're really keying into, and then we have an access that comes into our lower parking lot at Bessey Square, with a, a nice set of stairs that goes up to, to the, um, to the retail development and the restaurants and so forth. So, that's our pedestrian connection, and I just wanted to point out the campus kind of look. And I, my question to you is, you know, do we have to meet an absolute setback here on a street? Because it's, it's kind of irrelevant the way we, we've designed it from a design standpoint, but you allow both in your zoning, and it's quite confusing, so I'll leave that one for future conversation. I think what I'd like to do right now is ask Rick Shene to come up and just talk a little bit about the structure of our ownership.
Good evening. Rick Shene with Drummond Woodson. I represent Housing Initiatives of New England and its affiliated entities with respect to this project. Cindy just asked me to run through the leasing slash ownership situation here, just so the, the record is clear. The original tenant from the town was Bessey School Senior Housing Corporation, and at least essentially the two lots that make up the project as a whole. Given the nature of the financing that's involved in this project, tax credit-related financing, it's necessary to do, even though it's a unified project, it has to be done by two different limited partnerships to accommodate the type of financing. So, the original lease was assigned to Bessey Commons Corporation, which in turn sublet Lot 1, or the Phase 1 section of the project, to Bessey School Limited Partnership. So, that entity got the financing to renovate the school, do the addition, and that, of course, is done in operational. Phase 2 will be sublet by Bessey Commons Corporation to Bessey Commons Roman 2 LP. Similar concept, but separate sublease. That entity will, will do the project and obtain the necessary financing. The two partnerships will, will work together on this unified project in terms of maintenance and services and the like. But when the project is hopefully approved, the Bessey Commons Corporation will enter into that sublease with Bessey Commons 2 LP, so that will ultimately be the applicant slash developer. One other thing, Cindy mentioned that there are some common parking spaces that are going to be constructed as part of this project. Some of them were shifted to accommodate where people need to park, visitors and the like. So, there'll be an amendment that will be part of this new sublease arrangement to clarify which, that, which of these parking spaces and related improvements are used by Phase 1, which are used by Phase 2, and which are used in common. And that arrangement will, of course, go before the town, because the town is the lessor, has to approve amendments and approve the assignment of the sub, the sublease of Phase 2. So, that's basically the structure of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions if that didn't confuse anybody, or did confuse anybody. In other words, that's it. Thanks.
So, I don't think there's any question in terms of right title and interest. We're just stewards of the property for, for the town of Scarborough, but it, it does become a little more complex, and our actual application will be Bessey Commons 2 LP. So, we will, we'll modify that, just to clarify as well. I think the, the next really critical thing may be the stormwater. I'm not sure if you want to see more on the site, or if you'd like to get into some of the details, and I'd ask Kurt Newfield to come to the microphone and talk about the way that we, that he has designed this. It's a pretty extensive design.
Hello, I'm Kurt Newfield with Sightlines, out of Brunswick. Happy to be here working on the Phase 2. We did work with the Bessey Senior Housing on Phase 1, so glad to have the continuity. As Cindy had mentioned earlier, this was anticipated, it, it obviously happened, the shapes have changed, the parking layout has changed, but just in general, serving this building, we did have electrical conduit come up, we have water available coming up with, uh, also some sewer, so we're just able to extend those utilities to the building. Water will come around, I'm sorry, electrical will come around this side, water on this side, and sewer pretty much comes straight out, so very easy. There is a natural gas stub out there as well. So, I just wanted to point those out before getting into the stormwater. The layout here with parking on both sides of the building to allow direct access from the, for the residents really lends itself to breaking a stormwater from the pavement up to go here. This is a focal point, I just didn't use the term focal point. Focal point infiltration system, if the board's not familiar with it, it's recently approved by the DEP, recently. But it's a high-rate infiltration media, so achieves the filtration quality that they're looking for in a much smaller footprint, and then I think you could put plants within that footprint, so it's really, maybe it looks a little out of place in the middle of the lawn, but it's much more attractive than some of the other BMPs that they have used in the past. So, the water would be brought there by swales. It goes through this media. There's a small set of chambers which provide some additional treatment, and then that will go out to be a new storm drain, not tying into theirs at all, but it does outfall the same existing detention basin down here. Similarly, this parking lot and this parking lot have their own focal point locations that they will drain to be a surface flow, and those get discharged into the existing detention basin. The building uses a drip-edge filter on both sides. They're separate, but it's basically stone on top of filter media that is underdrained, and those will come out in daylight out here to drain directly down into the off-site areas. The, uh, the filter system slows the runoff down quite a bit, so although we'll outlet, provide outlet protection, there's no real concern with the, uh, the runoff from those roof grip edges. So, we're breaking it up into different areas. We have submitted to, to the DEP. We met with them today. I understand Angela would like to have been there, my apologies. But we will certainly keep you up to date on any things, any developments there. They seem to think that the, uh, presentation, uh, the planning where stormwater fit the criteria, and we hope it will go through their system fairly readily. We did review Woodern and Kern's comments, we've given you some feedback. I think that maybe I misunderstood some of your points about how we went further controlled peak rates of runoff. We were taking a, a, an approach that required not so much extensive work inside this outlet control structure to make that work. The only storm event that we saw as increasing was the 25-year event. Happy to work with staff and look at that and see if there's some additional ways that we could limit that to meet this, uh, their approvals. The difference is, is less than 10% of the peak flow, which really, when you get into the way rainstorm is calculated, it's almost, uh, not statistically meaningful. But let's take a look at that. It does go into a very large wetland complex, which will further attenuate the flow, the flows. I hate to spend a lot of time on technical comments, if the board doesn't want to hear it, so I guess I'll end my presentation there. If you have questions about grading or drainage, or site layout, or landscaping, I'd be happy I'd be happy to answer any of those questions for you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's always, it's helpful to get an overview, and you know, we don't want to try to redesign it on the fly with you. But we appreciate the overview, and I'm sure there'll be some questions, and we'll have Angela weigh in as well.
The other issue is that we did our, as Kurt said, we'd made a presentation to DEP today, and I think we're going to work on it together in tandem with Angela so that we're all on the same page on that. But they were pleased, I think, with the number of structures we had and the way we were controlling it.
Great.
I just want to point out a couple of things here relative to comments that we've already received. As Cindy noted, the wetlands were mapped again, and the greenish solid fill represents the new wetlands. And the outline and the, I don't know if you can even see that pattern. It looks like a dot pattern from you, was what was previously mapped 12 years ago. So they are very similar. There's a little bit less around here, which is where I think we were potentially showing some impacts. There are now no wetland impacts from any of our developments. So that's the good news. You can see that this is basically all going on top of an existing field. There's the existing storm drain. What I wanted to mention is that there's a pretty substantial wooded area right along that property line, as one would hope. Construction is going to stay out of the setbacks, which is right about where that wooded boundary starts. So that canopy will remain intact. There's some comments about whether or not some additional screening or buffering would be required. And I think if you have an opportunity to look at the site, you'll see that that is a nice standard vegetation that will screen not only the building, but also there was some discussion about the lighting. The lighting fixtures on the campus are kind of a carriage style where the bulbs come up. Yeah, okay, thank you. So you can see the basic shape of it. The fixture is up underneath the cap, so it's fully shielded upwards and only shines down on these newer fixtures. So that's really a good full cutoff. And they're only 18-foot poles. So the illumination plan, I think, showed that there was pretty good light control, and it does go down to a zero illumination along that common boundary. And that combined with the vegetation, I think, will really prevent any light trespass to the neighbors.
I just wanted to point out one thing. This rendering was put into an actual photograph. So this canopy, these trees are existing along that boundary that is common with the residents that live along Ward Street. And we have no intention of cutting anything along that edge. Some of it's on their property, some of it's on ours. But I just wanted you to know that it's a pretty mature group of trees back there. And then this shows what we're proposing to do for street types of trees. And then we have one group of plantings that we're going to use on the south side that take a lot of time, and another side, another group of plantings that we're using on the north side to use along the walkways and foundation plantings. Yes, would you like us to present what's going inside the building? Okay, right. I think that this includes most of, most everything, and we'll just respond to...
Sure. And there may be other more detailed questions that come up, and it sounds like you've got more available if we need it, so.
Yeah. I think we can answer your questions, but we're here to help at whatever level you'd like us to. But thank you for having our presentation tonight.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate the staff. They responded so quickly and so thoroughly.
You do, too?
Ms. Taylor, there's a little spot, I think, right on the podium there.
Right here.
Yep, there you go, all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome to hold it if you'd like.
You don't have to.
Before we go to board discussion, we do have the opportunity for public comments since this is the first time we've had this iteration in front of us. Anyone who's interested, all right, we'll go to the board then. Susan, would you like to start off?
If this isn't going to work, let me know. But I've got the subdivision site plan review comments in front of me. Okay, and I'm just going to go down and make sure that these items have, for example, number one, it talks about the three-lot subdivision. And the whole question as to, what am I trying to say? I think we're coming up to the question about the TVC 2. Do you have the subdivision elements in front of you? Okay. So we go down to that when it was originally approved by the planning board. It included two lots. And we're encouraged to ask the applicant when these two lots were merged into one. What we just got through talking about with Rick, that it was never really going to be that way. It never was that way. So that whole thing just is moot, am I correct?
Would appear so, yes.
Yes, okay.
I think, if I might, while you look for that, I do think, you know, what Mr. Siney was sort of describing about the ownership and the subleasing, that is certainly an element that is going to require some review probably by our town's attorney as well.
Mm-hmm.
And if I heard Mr. Siney correctly, it sounds like it might even require council action if that's what you might have been alluding to when you said the town. So staff had a bunch of questions.
Well, that's where we're at. We're at, going back and forth with this. Okay. Site plan review elements. Okay. The applicant wishes to include bonus density for affordable senior housing, but they're not proposing to do this according to their application. I mean, we don't need to go into all of these one at a time as long as I know that they're being taken care of.
Yeah, we are not using the bonus density because we're not matching our bonus, our density right now.
And the difference in the lot size? I mean, these are...
I think they're pretty technical. I shouldn't say technical. I think they're just, they're easily correctable. Let's put it that way.
Okay, so I get this, and I look through it, and I read it all. And at this point, I just ignore it? I mean, I just assume that staff's going to go over that, and I don't have to worry about it?
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
We'll leave it at yes.
That's all I need to know.
Ignore.
Anything I don't have to do, I'm prepared.
Yeah, I don't know if ignore is the word I would use, but it will...
I'll use that word.
Okay.
It's yours, not mine. Okay. I'm a little confused about number E, where a pedestrian waves space alternative transportation. Request the applicant formalized pedestrian access. Don't we have a pedestrian access to Bessie Square now? Okay, so that doesn't have to be concerned. I could give that one up. Okay, I'm not concerned about the landscaping. The lighting is... I have to say, when I got the packet, I was very confused. I couldn't figure out where anything was going. This is something that I really would like to have. It sounds silly to say, but I'd like a site walk on this. I would like to actually see where the roads are going to go and where the turnaround is going to be and where the guards are going to go and, you know, where the buffering is because...
We'd be happy to do that with you anytime. I mean, if you just want to schedule a board review of it, that's fine.
Or I'll leave that up to the chair. It could be a board review, or you could just say, any of you who want to just call Cindy and make an appointment. Because I do think it's very confusing. But I'm not, that's not a bad thing because it's a great lot, and it can take this. But as where I'm sitting, I need to see how the pieces are going to work.
I had a similar thought, actually. I think it's one of those sites that a lot of us feel like we know it because we go by a part of it all the time. But when you really dig into it...
And I drive up in there because I just love it up there. So I do drive up there. But I can't tell when I'm up there where that building's coming in.
Right. So I think, and I think it'd be nice to try to make sure, try to make sure that everyone on the board kind of has the same baseline familiarity with the site. So I think that would be good.
I want to make sure that we are clear about the wetland delineation. I'm not clear where we ended up with that. Thank you.
So we had, as part of our original, we had a wetland delineated out there. And then Angela reminded me that we needed to update that. Your wetlands were only good for five years. And so we hired a wetlands professional that went out there last week.
Okay.
Stantec, and who had bought the company that we had do it originally. And they remapped it, and we have resubmitted that.
Okay, so we'll see that when it comes around, too?
You will. And that's what we were showing tonight as well.
Okay.
And actually, the wetlands have been reduced by a considerable amount, so.
Interesting, isn't it? I think a lot of this is very technical stuff, which will get worked out between staff and the applicants as we go towards the first round of taking a look. I guess if I can get a site walk in here, I'm going to feel a whole lot better about this because the individual pieces are fine. But I want to make sure that it all just comes together in a way that I can understand. So thank you.
Thanks.
Roger. First, I want to say I think what you've done there so far is terrific. And what I'm looking at looks great. And just a couple of things. You mentioned, this is to Cindy, you mentioned in your presentation. I'm just kind of curious. You mentioned a public road. So can I assume the road that comes in Route 1, that's all public? And does that basically continue there where the Hammerhead is?
It does. It terminates at the Hammerhead, and then we've actually provided access for... When we created the three lots, the third lot was after we built Bessie Commons 1. The town sold the third lot to Main Veterans Home. But at the end of that T-turn, we've created an access. If any time in the future we need connectivity there for them, it is available.
So that road actually goes to the Veterans Home?
It could. It would have to be built, and it would take some serious building, but it could connect because that third lot is now theirs.
Okay.
And that lot, just so you know, Roger, goes out. The original Bessie School property started on Route 1, and then it's kind of a dogleg or an L-shaped, and it goes all the way up to Commerce Drive. It's that portion that goes out to Commerce Drive that we have the ability to connect to the town road because we have an easement to their property. And then the, you know, the rest of their site is our directed butter.
Okay, while we're still talking about the public road, how do you handle the snow plowing?
The town plows it.
They plow the public road?
They plow the town road, yes.
But you folks do the interior where the plow them on?
Absolutely. We have professional snow plow companies that we contract with.
I was just kind of curious about that. And the other thing I wanted, I guess this would be directed to Angela. There's not going to be, are you satisfied that there's not going to be any effects on... Eastern Village is right beyond town below you folks, right?
There's two parcels. There's our wooded section, and then there's another wooded section that I believe is another phase that they have that's between us and their current development.
But they're basically downhill from where everything goes downhill.
Correct.
So are we pretty satisfied that their engineering is going to meet all the necessary standards and everything? So those people who buy those expensive homes down here are...
Well, I will say that the Eastern Village stormwater model is quite extensive, and there is a lot of wetlands in between, as Cindy mentioned. But that's all part of their larger model is what's coming off the site. And really, it's looking, was a snapshot. So again, anything that changes upstream of that can change what happens downstream. So I think that's where, again, we were highlighting making sure the flood controls are there in place. And what they accommodated for culverts and crossings of the roadway and through their ponds or around their ponds is all based on that.
Because if I'm not mistaken, the insurance business that we just dealt with, they're also tied into this, too, aren't they? Not that that's going to be...
They are on another leg of it, yes. But they're not directly downstream of it, no.
I don't think I have anything else. I, there's a lot of technical things like Jay was saying, which I think the staff would probably work out.
Roger, you did mention the public roadway. I have talked to Mike Shaw, who's our Public Works Director, and he and I have worked out an arrangement around that Hammerhead so that our plowing systems can work together. And he's been fabulous to work with over the last 12 years, and I expect to continue that relationship.
No, I think it's a great addition to the town and what you've done already and what you're going to do in the future. I think it looks great, so.
Thank you.
I'm awesome.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. I was going to piggyback on Roger's question about the plowing because that is an awkward situation where the plow appears that it's going to have to just turn off and possibility of a bank of snow in front of your entrance to where the private plowing would take...
That's okay. We can, we have it covered, yes. We'll take care of that.
I can't wait to hear what it is. The other question I had for you was max footprint. And maybe I misread this or misunderstood this, but in the TVC 2, is it a 10,000 square foot max footprint?
It is, however, let me see if I can get my bearings on this one. I don't believe that applies to...
Senior housing.
Senior housing. So... They can make it as large as the planning board would permit.
Oh, good answer. All right, thank you. And then as far as you had a waiver request on the recreation impact fees, and I'd be curious to hear this board's take on something like that. And I understand the argument that you do provide a lot of recreation on site for the residents. I think I'd like to hear a little bit of a discussion on that. Personally, I don't like giving exemptions, like in these circumstances, based on the type of facility you are. Because where do you draw the line? Is it senior housing? Is it, you know... I don't like picking winners and losers. If everyone's going to play by the rules, I like them to play by the rules. So, but I understand the argument that you are providing a lot of recreational opportunities already on site. So I'd be interested to hear the full board discussion on that if they don't mind weighing in. And then the last point I had was related to the connectivity of... And I assume maybe staff was maybe pointing to where the coffee shop and the parking lot area. And I think that would be a fantastic spot for, whether it's a small sidewalk. I'd have to, probably have to remind myself of the seat out there, but I believe...
Well, we have a, we've built a sidewalk along Route 1, both in front of the school and also in front of the coffee shop. So we have two means of access on Bessie Commons 1 to get to Route 1. For anybody that's handicapped, that's the route that they would take to get out. You know, if they're in a mobilized wheelchair or something like that, they would go to Route 1. For anybody who likes a good walk, which we have a lot of people that do, we have a walkway that connects Bessie Commons 1 with our lower parking lot at Bessie Square. I actually purchased that property because I wanted to move the building closer to the schools, our second phase. But then as we started developing Bessie Square and the restaurant came along, I needed that entire area for parking to support the restaurant and to build that commercial development out. So then, you know, we located Bessie 2 where it is. But we have, we have great access, pedestrian access. You probably are familiar with that parking lot.
If on the map, you could just quickly show me. Because I'm pretty certain I know where the back of that parking lot is for the commercial space.
Right. So we've got a building here, that's O'Reilly's?
Yep.
And QW R access? And we've got a building here that is covered grounds and...
Correct.
And you can use the parking lot here, and you come around here, and then you go to a larger parking lot?
Correct, yes.
I don't know if you've seen down there, but where they took out the foundations here, they actually terraced it and put in gardens.
Right. So my question is, have you considered connecting that parking lot to the other parking lot? Because in my experience, people like to walk in the shortest possible path.
Oh, so...
And instead of sending them up a public road up onto Route 1 and then over to O'Reilly's Cure, how about a shortcut?
I can do that. I can do that, yeah.
That would be my thoughts, and I think that's maybe what staff could have been driving at. Because if, one, you've got senior housing there, I'm sure the longer walk is probably not in their best interest in most cases.
Right.
And people tend to gravitate towards the straight line.
Yeah. And I'd be happy to talk to you further if we all go out and take a look at the site. I'd love to schedule that tonight if you have a chance. But yeah, happy to talk about that.
That's, that is it for my comments.
Great. Thanks, Nick. Robin?
Yeah. So I agree with Mr. McGee. I'm not necessarily partial to a waiver for the recreation fee. I'm interested though in what other board members have. But I guess my questions are relative to Phase 1, Phase 2, and I got a little confused too about parcel 1, 2, and 3. So, is there, are there any plans to have a Phase 3 that would go on the same parcel somewhere?
No, again, that Lot 3 was sold to Main Veterans Home.
Veterans Home, okay.
And they, I think in turn are thinking about a massive development on their site.
Okay, but as far as this parcel is concerned that's outlined here, there's no additional, there's no additional theme?
Just two lots. I mean, we have the potential because we're not maxing the density, you know, if I could come back.
Yeah, and where I'm going with this too, Cindy, is it's sort of, it's folding into the stormwater piece. Because I guess I'm going to challenge the stormwater a little bit here because I heard that the only increase will be for the 25-year event, like it was mainly like 10%, but if you're not using the right rainfall data, then you don't really know what your increase is. And because of the sensitive nature of the communities around here, the trees and the wetland are going to be your best friend to keep the stormwater on-site. So I might even throw out that perhaps we think about some deed restrictions to maintain that forest canopy as sort of like a forested buffer or a wetland conservation easement to be your best friend for stormwater management. If you can't get, if you can't get zero impacts, those are going to be your best friends kind of a thing. Or maybe, as Angela was saying, thinking about that existing stormwater gallery there, what we can do to maximize that performance.
Sure.
Okay?
There'll always be some wetlands back there. I mean, it's not our intent to go back down in there. If I was, I mean, I could make that building in Phase 2 a little bit larger. Actually, I didn't realize it, but when we did Phase 1, we were allowed to do a four-story building. And that's where we started down the path to design and then I realized that the zoning had been changed.
Well, I like the idea of you going up instead of out.
Me too. I'm with you. But that's where I would see it in the future, but those woods are gorgeous.
Yeah, so in general too, I know you're just beginning your discussions with DEP and I would please encourage you to include Angela in all those discussions. She's a tremendous resource and will also have more ideas.
She reminded me of that today. Wish she'd told me before our meeting. Whatever.
But I like how you put that you're sort of stewards of the property for the town and I feel like there's a lot of opportunity here for some conservation practices and the like because of the open space, especially of the upland.
And I actually think that, you know, the, my idea of asking for that waiver was twofold. One is that we provide a tremendous amount of activity that Bessie won. Bridge groups come in from outside. We have, you know, about 40 people every Thursday come in and do quilting. And, you know, we don't charge for it. We take, we maintain the space, we clean it, we heat it, we light it, and we let people use it. So I feel like we are doing some things for the community and that's why I ask.
Absolutely, and so my comments are twofold with respect to that. One is, I remember when it used to be a soccer field, I would take my daughter there to the Bessie School. So, there is some impact to recreation there. But number two is all those, have all those traffic counts, all those trips in with Bridge Group been incorporated into the traffic study?
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah. And then the other, you know, going back to your question on the woods, I mean, we would love to just see if we can put in some walking trails down there that would be nice so that everybody can use it.
But what I'm worried about is we've seen, without the covenants or deed restrictions kind of a thing, we've seen some instances before the planning board where it, you know, it's completely maybe not, you know, meant to happen, but those trees get taken down and then you lose not only the buffer to Ward Street, but the stormwater management that the trees provide between your property and Eastern Village and the other abutters. So, keep doing what you're doing. It's great. I think you're on the right track. I think there's a lot of opportunity here though, so I encourage you to keep staff in the loop, so thank you.
Well, I participated in those planning sessions. The interconnectivity is important, but, you know, I appreciate all of those things as well.
Thank you. Thanks.
Rachel?
Yeah, a lot of my colleagues here have teased out some of the answers to some of the questions I had, including Roger's and your discussion of the road. I was trying to decide whether it was a road or a driveway because it appeared to be described as each at some point. At one point, and I can't find it in my notes, but I believe at one point you referenced the availability, the contemplation of community gardens, raised gardens.
We have some raised gardens there now.
Could you show me?
Sure. I should have brought a picture. Yeah, it shows on the aerial, but it's hard to see. We have community gardens right along here and we would continue the, I think we would continue these gardens here for both, so we have a kind of a joint garden opportunity for both Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Would that interfere at all with Mr. McGee's discussion about creating a connection to the?
No. What we did here was we built a raised bed that's about four feet high so people can literally stand at those. In other complexes, we have them at different levels and we have them so you can wheel under them if you're in a wheelchair. So I think we would design a garden system here that would, you know, accommodate as many people as possible. But they're very effective. I mean, raised beds, I mean, people can raise so much food.
I'm looking at the plans that you have and I assume that they really have just, for the house, for the apartments themselves, and I'm assuming that they're really just kind of sketches because there's no indication on here of square footage for the apartments. Just a couple of questions. Are all of these wheelchair accessible?
They are. They're all wheelchair accessible. They all have three-foot doors. Some are more accessible than others, but we have designed them so that we can accommodate wheelchair access in all of our units. And I can show you those if you come for a tour. I'd be happy to show you a unit. We're actually duplicating the units that we did in Phase 1.
Okay. And another question, I'm looking at laundry. Are there laundry facilities in the apartments or is just?
No, on each floor, we provide a common laundry facility. So we have a washer and dryer at each level.
So, I'm looking and it looks as though you've got one washer dryer unit for 14 apartments. Is that kind of cramped or?
No, you know, they're, most people get into a routine and because they have seven days a week to do it and they know when their neighbors are doing it, they can, you know, work pretty successfully. That doesn't seem to be a problem. We have some guidelines for that with our funding sources too that stipulate how many machines we have, so if we're light on that concept, we'll re-add them.
Right. Thank you. I really look forward to a site visit. I think that'd be very helpful.
Love to share. Thank you.
Thanks. Rick?
I have some questions on the traffic study, actually.
That's my only consultant I don't have here tonight.
Yeah, I kind of enjoy looking through them and usually they're pretty straightforward, so I don't have a lot of questions. But on this one, how many, let me ask some leading questions first, maybe. How many parking spaces are there at Bessie's? There's two phases, right? Phase 1, Phase 2?
Correct, yeah.
And Phase 1 is occupied now?
Phase 1 has been occupied for 12 years.
Okay, so how many parking spaces are there for Phase 1?
There are 54 units there and we have 63, I believe 63 spaces.
So you have 63 spaces there. I like math too. And you have 40 spaces?
We have 40 units that were in Phase 2 and will have 57 spaces that we're adding.
You know, 57 spaces.
We always want to have enough so we have accommodations for guests.
So if I do the math right, you have a total of 120 spaces for cars. And then you have, I mean, I'm sure you have some services associated with these facilities, right? So you have landscaping probably, maintenance. Do you provide cleaning at all these units too?
We don't, they.
Really? Because in here it says you do.
Well, we don't. We.
I told you they were leading questions.
Yeah, that's okay. We don't have, we have our maintenance people that sometimes help residents with their cleaning, but we don't have, it's not something we offer, it's something that people take advantage of if they need services like that. We, the services that generally that people get at Bessie are, I mean, some people do have their apartments cleaned, but are generally the home make services and also home healthcare agents that come in.
Okay.
So you're trying to get to a.
So you have 120 spaces and you're saying there's 11 trips per day?
That's. That's per peak hour.
Per peak hour?
Right, so the traffic study just looks at the peak hours and what their impacts are during those times.
Okay.
It doesn't look at sort of total daily load, so to speak.
And this.
To borrow a stormwater phrase.
I like that.
We have a lot of people that don't have cars.
And the school that closed in 97 had 47 trips per peak hour then?
Oh, probably more.
Oh, yeah.
What kind of school is this?
Well, I went to school there. It was, it was a junior high.
It was a junior high?
Yeah, and then, and we had sports activities. We had buses. And then prior to when I signed a lease, it was a resource center and they did special needs facilities there and they had roofs, recyclables in there. So, but it was, it went from a junior high school, it started as a high school, went from a junior high, went to a junior high and then became an elementary school.
Okay. All right, I just, hmm. It just doesn't seem logical, I guess, but it's.
Well, if you looked at the trips that are generated on a much greater basis because the schools are much larger, but if you think about the buses, the teachers, the parents and all the ancillary people that come and go on a school at peak hours, it's a very different, it's a very different transportation system they have for retired people.
Eric, we can put this on the, sort of, the list for.
Yeah, it may be, it may be, it may be that I was just confused, so. All right, other than the traffic, the only thing that I'd like to mention, and it looks really nice. I like, very nice design.
Thank you.
But I've seen some similar facilities that have like a covered area where you pull up in front for the folks to get up.
Like a portico?
Yeah, and I don't want you to change your design. It's just a, it's just a thought for Phase 3.
Yeah, we have both in, I mean, in our assisted living, we put in porticos. Generally speaking, it's not necessary for these, for this independent house.
Yeah, because.
Only because of what you do to cut off light from the community space where they want to be in their air-conditioned space.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I like that. I may be confused on the traffic, but the rest of it looks really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Already been a lot of good comments and questions and I'm not going to retrace all of that. Just to touch a few things quickly. First, to pick up on Rick's, one of Rick's last comments, and I don't want it to be lost and everything else, I really like the, you know, we've seen in the architecture to this point and I think it's, seems like a confirmation that you're looking to tie it in to what's already there, which, you know, is what we would expect. And so, look forward to seeing that fleshed out more. And, you know, not only does it, is it consistent with that unified sort of campus concept, but I think at least based on what we're seeing right now, it seems to be consistent with our, with our design standards. So, that's definitely promising. Going to this issue of right title and interest on the, you know, the different leases, for better or worse, I work in this industry too and so I can just say for whatever it's worth to my fellow board members that it may sound a little bit, a little bit wonky, but it's actually not all that exotic. And you do have these different limited partnerships that own and ultimately control these different properties that are attached to different pieces of financing when these tax credits are involved. So, I'm sure as Jay said, you know, the town will do its due diligence and make sure that everything is what it needs to be, but I can just say it's actually, it's not quite as, quite as wacky as it may sound. We have obviously some stormwater and buffering details to work through and it sounds like we're on the right track on that. I agree with the comment on, I think it was Nick's comment about providing a sidewalk connection up into the existing Riley's Cure area. Glad to hear, Cindy, that you sound amenable to looking at that. What else do we have here? Again, I don't want to put things into the ground. Oh, just, I think I guess I need to weigh in on the, sort of, the recreational fee. I mean, I appreciate where you're coming from in that, Cindy. I guess my inclination is to sort of, you know, for the sake of sort of continuity, to not waive that, partly because, you know, although there are opportunities, they're not necessarily things that sort of the general public would necessarily know about. So, again, I don't see that as a big issue. Hopefully it's not for you, but that's kind of where I am on that right now. And then going back to the site walk, I don't know if we'll necessarily get it scheduled tonight, but in, you know, typically we'll, you know, I'm sure Jay will shoot us an email tomorrow and we'll coordinate our schedules and anyone who can't make it, you know, based on the straw poll that we do, I assume they'll swing by on their own time. But I think that will be really helpful to kind of get the lay of the land and see how it all kind of fits together and, you know, where certain decision points might be, so. Susan?
It just dawned on me, this question about waiver and recreation, and you talked about trails. I think that there's something that can be worked out, might be able to be worked out, and I don't want to get into it right now, but maybe working with staff is a way of helping to develop some trails and call that a contribution to recreation.
Yeah, that's.
It's just an idea.
I think it needs to be better defined than.
Oh, it does. I'm just saying.
So, and Corey, I agree, we need to do something, I mean.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other sort of preliminary feedback that you're looking for from us at this point?
No, I think, you know, the, you know, it tends to become a little confusing between the lot lines and the parking and we'll work that out with the evenings and make sure that everybody's comfortable with that.
Okay.
Roger?
One quick question. Will there be any connectivity with Eastern Village from here or?
I don't own anything, I don't have any connection, I don't have any direct connections. Our lots do not abut. I looked at that.
Okay, okay.
If they did, I would, but I don't have a direct connection, Roger. But maybe over time we can work on something.
Okay, great. Thank you, and we'll look forward to seeing you out there, I guess.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Item number nine, Burnham Brookside LLC requests an amended site plan review for Building H5, Dunston Village Residential, assessor's map U30, Lot 17. Jay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, as probably many, if not all, board members may recall, this is a, this is a site plan amendment for one of the buildings that was approved, I think it was just probably about a little less than a year ago, down to what's being called the Dunston Village component of the Dunston Crossing subdivision. These are the properties right along Route 1 and more specifically, the property on the right-hand side as you access the site from Route 1, where there was a number of residential units that were approved. Four of them were three-bedroom, or, I'm sorry, four of the buildings were three-unit townhouses and those are currently under construction. And then there was this building H5, which is a larger three-story multifamily development. So what is being presented before you is an amendment to that previous building. The size is a little bit smaller and the units are configured a little differently and I'm sure the applicant can. And I'm sure the applicant can detail those for you as well. Um, this is in the TVC zone, so it does permit for this type of use. And as I said, there's a previously approved subdivision and site plan. Really, at this time, um, the only thing that needs amendment is the site plan, because the subdivision governs, allows for the number of units that are being suggested. Um, so you will have received staff comments, which we, um, really note, uh, some issues just around landscaping. And sure that there's a detailed coordination with the storm drain system. Um, there's just a question about snow removal, given the way some things are being reconfigured. Um, some, as board members might recall, there was limited snow removal areas previously. The applicant talked about, well, once those areas are full, they'll take it off-site. Um, so just wanted to be sure we have that discussion, that there's an understanding about what will happen moving forward. Um, outside of that, like I said, you should have staff comments on this. And, uh, at this point, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, and I'll turn over to Mr. Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Sean Frank. I'm a civil engineer with Sebaggo Technics. Uh, with me tonight is Harold Burnham of, uh, Burnham Brookside LLC. Uh, when we were here last summer with Elliot Chamberlain, uh, presenting the residential development associated with Dunston Village, I think he was being pretty clear that he was specifically going to develop those, uh, those three-unit buildings, the four-three-unit townhouse buildings, uh, but wasn't quite sure if he was going to develop the apartment building itself. Uh, over that time, he's worked with Harold, and Harold has worked with him. Uh, Harold has his, uh, a design criteria of his own, uh, but we do have an agreement now and, between the two parties. Uh, just in terms of, again, just like all, everything else is within Dunston. Uh, even though Harold will be developing the apartment building and will, uh, own it and maintain it, he will be part of the association associated with that. Uh, so as, uh, as, uh, staff discussed, there is limited, obviously, snow storage area right up on the village itself, just because of, uh, a lot of the landscaping that was occurring, a lot of the parking, the buildings themselves. Uh, but as you all recall, once you went down to the road onto the left, we had a, a pretty large field area proposed down through there. I think it was always Elliot's contention that the association, if you will, who is responsible for the removal of snow uh, on a necessary basis, always had that big field that they could just drag the snow down to. So, um, you know, that's, that's still the plan. Uh, we do appreciate the fact that, you know, we were so in an area there for, uh, some snow storage. How much could actually be accommodative in that area is probably pretty limited anyway. But, uh, what I did bring for the board, uh, was basically the, the two plans, if you will. Uh, the bottom plan here being, uh, the approved site plan at that time, uh, for, uh, for Elliot, for Dunston Village. Uh, that particular building was nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-two square feet in size. Uh, Harold's footprint is a bit smaller, uh, almost two thousand feet smaller, where we have seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-four square feet. Uh, what we have in here actually is a, a total of, uh, thirty-six units, with all single, single bedrooms and studio apartments, uh, less than the seven hundred and fifty square feet, yes, Harold, uh, so that from a, you know, from a net residential density standpoint, it all fit. Uh, Harold, as you may recall, uh, actually developed the, uh, the apartments off of Broad Turn Road down behind the diner. Um, so it's, uh, the, the layout of the floor plan and the, the tenants that he's talking about, uh, he's, uh, understood very well. In terms of the building, uh, that Elliot had proposed, if I can get over there. So, again, just from a discussion standpoint, uh, the, it's still a three-story building. Uh, in terms of the architectural features, the, uh, the peaked roof, the asphalt, uh, roof line. I think Elliot, probably because he had the bigger building, he had had some, uh, some more dimensions associated with it, and there's some, perhaps some more architectural details to it. That's actually the back, isn't it, Harold? I'll get there. Something about that. Uh, but again, this would be the front of the building, uh, and the side of the building. Uh, so again, just in terms of the overall general appearance associated with the building, we tried to maintain that same type of character, if you will, uh, even though we were divi-, uh, having a smaller footprint associated with it. Uh, we also had, uh, for Elliot, uh, was an approved landscaping plan associated with H five, uh, which was what he was calling this building at that time. Uh, this had been prepared, uh, for him by four-side architects. Uh, unfortunately, they've been, been now part of Hammerman Associates, so I couldn't actually have them revise the plan. Uh, but in terms of all the plantings types out of there, the number of plantings and all those types of things, we'll basically incorporate those right onto this site plan. Obviously, we wanted to meet with you folks and make sure you're all comfortable in terms of the revisions to the plan itself, uh, prior to incorporating that, but there is additional room. We do have a sidewalk out back, but obviously, we have more room because of the smaller footprint, uh, to accommodate the, that landscaping. And certainly, we will incorporate that landscaping. Uh, as you may recall, we also had some field drains in through here, uh, to collect the runoff from the landscaped areas and direct it out back, and, uh, that will accommodate that as well, if, if the board be comfortable making that a condition of approval, working that through with staff. The other major change associated with this was, remember, there was a natural building proposed for, uh, the trash storage? Uh, again, I don't know if you've been out to, uh, to Harold's, uh, development off of Broad Turn Road. Uh, but what he likes to have is, he actually has a series of bins out to the back. Each, basically, each apartment has their own bin. Uh, the question was raised in terms of what's wrapped around that. It's actually a fence. It's a six-foot-high white vinyl fence, uh, and we'll commit to that in association with that. Uh, basically, again, the sidewalk access to, to the back, so people can get in there. That's actually picked up by a private contractor on, on a needed basis. Uh, but again, each one of the, the units, uh, actually has a bin in the back that they can access and utilize. And again, he has it in the other, uh, facility, and it's worked out very well. Uh, again, as we go through it, um, all the infrastructure is actually part of the original developers. So, again, Har- Harold's basically part is basically to, uh, develop the building itself, the associations and landscaping and most types of things. Uh, we did go through staff comments, and in terms of the fact that we did, because we lost the building, if you will, for the trash, we actually have two additional parking spaces, so we'll certainly, uh, pick up on that. I mentioned the, uh, the white vinyl, six-foot-high white vinyl fencing. Uh, and in terms of the Scarborough Sanitary District, uh, we have a meeting with the superintendent, uh, this Thursday, uh, with a meeting with the trustees. I believe it's the third Thursday of the month. Uh, obviously, at that point in time, really, again, understand all the infrastructure's approved. Uh, Mr. Chamberlain's putting in the infrastructure out to the manhole just outside of the building. It's really getting the acceptance of the flows, if you will, from the trustees and obviously, uh, the writing of the check associated with that. So, uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd conclude my presentation. Again, I think it's, it's, it's similar, actually a little smaller scale than what the board had approved, uh, previously. Um, and again, the landscaping, uh, if the board's comfortable, again, you know, we'll basically take that same landscape and incorporate it into that site and, uh, and, and get a plan to staff for approval, if, if the board's comfortable with that. Uh, with that, I conclude my presentation, and certainly be happy to answer any questions that Ford asks. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our first upper opportunity for public comment? All right. Who wants to go first?
Um, this question is to both you and Angela. Does my memory serve, didn't we ask you that there be roof drip line trenches around that building?
No, no.
No?
The roof is actually, has the roof drains connected to this, um, underground, well, the groundwater's recharge.
Right, the groundwater recharge, it's going, we had little field inlets with, uh, with under drains in between them, flat under drains.
Okay.
Um, and actually, if I remember right, it goes around and it's, uh, it's, the outpour is one foot higher than the inlet. So, we actually store that first foot of water, so we're trying to percolate as much as we can back into the system.
So, it gets the roof, as well as he mentioned, the landscape area, but it also does collect the roof, great.
Yes, but you're right, it does include the roof, though. I'm glad you mentioned that.
All right, I'm all set then, thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel?
Yeah, just a, a little technical note here. I'm looking at sheet one of two, which is actually that one that you have up there. And under the note, you still note that what's going to be built includes, will include thirty-six single-bedroom apartments. And you have now, um, changed that to four-studio and, uh, thirty-two one-bedrooms, so I think you need to change that.
No, I, actually, Rachel, I think, I think what was previously approved was the thirty-two one-bedrooms and two...
Two two-bedrooms, correct. So, they are, they had thirty-four approved, which is, uh, thirty, thirty-two one-bedroom, two two-bedrooms. Uh, we're proposing thirty-six one-bedroom studio apartments.
Thirty-two one-bedrooms and four studios, correct?
No.
They're proposing thirty-six one-bedroom apartments.
Well, um...
Did I mention something wrong in my, in my letter, if I did, I tell you?
Well, I, I saw, uh, where did I see? I saw a, I saw under your A two, A, uh, A one dash two, I'm looking at studios. Three hundred and seventy-one square feet, four hundred and twenty-five square feet, Studio Design A, Studio B. Studio, studio.
I see, I see.
So, there are four studios.
Well, it's a mix, yeah.
Instead of thirty-six.
I'm sorry, could you tell me where you're reading that now?
Uh, first floor plan, A one point two.
Okay, so, plan sheet...
It's showing four studio apartments.
Right, our total...
No, no, they say thirty-six units consistent with one bedroom, um, and studio apartments. I'm looking at that, but they...
Yeah, well, I, so, so I'm seeing four studio apartments on the first floor.
So, those are still one-bedrooms, though. I don't know...
Where's the bedroom?
In the studio?
I think there has to be one or the other.
It's, it's either a studio or it's a one-bedroom.
But I don't...
What I'm, and what I'm noting is that you're saying thirty-six single-bedroom apartments, and I would suggest under the note that it be changed to thirty-two one-bedroom apartments and four studios.
It's, it's more studios than that. What's the actual count? Thirty-six and ten? It's thirty-six and ten. I mean, twenty-six and ten for a total of thirty-six.
Okay, well, then, that needs to be changed on the note.
I see what you're saying, okay, and I, I was thinking from an ordinance standpoint. I appreciate where you're coming from now, so...
There, there needs to be some sort of consistency if you have plans that show, um, studios. I actually don't see the studios on the second floor. I see only one bedroom. And on the third floor, I only see one bedrooms. I don't see studios.
I think it's a matter of, as Mr. Frank was saying, I think in, in, in the way we were sort of thinking of them, so long as there's only one bed and they're under seven hundred and fifty square feet, our zoning ordinance counts that as a half a unit. So, I think, so, yeah, so it's a vernacular issue, and we can certainly...
Yeah, it's, it's just, you know, call it after, or...
It's the same number.
And you're right, I just look at it from an ordinance standpoint, so I apologize. I, but I think I, I mean, again, I'd be happy to revise that note to say twenty-six single-bedroom and ten studios.
I almost think it's easier to call the, the, the floor plan, to call them all one, even a studio still has one bed, so it's really...
Well, that's, yeah.
We can, we can work out the, uh, the plan...
You can work that out, please. Uh, I have a question, then. On the back, you've set up a community, sort of, community gathering space. How, how big is that?
Uh, it's roughly just ten by ten, by the way.
I, I can see where it is in the, uh, connected to the, the walkway in back.
Hey there, Rachel. I'm Harold Burnham, by the way. Nice to meet you.
Could you grab the handheld, Mr. Burnham? Thank you.
Yeah, that looks like it's on.
Yes, uh, you're talking about this space right here?
Yes.
Yeah, that just was, be a space for a couple of benches or something to sit out.
Would, would you be putting, what, six benches there, or just a place for people to gather?
Just wanted to call for a space to, you know, um, just sit out outside, you know. Very fortunate to be able to have the opportunity to build an apartment building inside of a place that offers so many amenities. And, uh, maybe there's some opportunity to, uh, enjoy the backyard.
Thank you.
Children being sixteen-feet skinnier, I believe.
I think you're right.
Um, obviously, the opportunity to give a good...
Yeah, and, and I note you have the walkway back there, which is nice. It allows people the opportunity to, to walk around.
Walk, please.
Yeah. Uh, and the trash, uh, thirty-six apartments, so there'll be thirty-six trash containers in a sixteen-by-twenty-foot trash bin collection area?
Yeah, those are commercial totes. They're a hundred, hundred-and-twenty-five gallons, like, as opposed to a town's probably seventy-gallon tote. So, they get emptied twice a week, and what it does is, tenants really don't like the five, six o'clock in the morning dumpster. They really bang the heck out of it in the morning. And, uh, also, that dumpster, unless you get locked in here, is kind of like a community dumpster. Um, people are less likely to back up the truck and put, eh, like I said the last time we did this, it's hard to put a mattress inside of a tote, you know, as opposed to a dumpster, when someone moves out, or they tend to, uh, uh, purge their lifestyle into a dumpster, as opposed to a tote. So, it's also, uh, when you, uh, when you have a dumpster, there is, uh, also, if there's some high winds through, it, it, it sends an awful lot of debris, um, as they dump it into the car. So, whole system has been a phenomenal system for us.
How many would you guess? I would tell them each one would be one, probably not that.
Oh, no, um, I'd say probably, you know, it's an as, as needed thing, too.
I think I misspoke. I was saying one per unit, and obviously, that's not the case. That they've, they're still communal totes when it comes down.
Probably fourteen, fifteen of them in there, I guess.
Okay, and I, I'm sure you have it in here, but I don't recall what it was. How high is the fence surrounding that?
Six feet.
All right, thank you very much.
Because that trash calculation, uh, it's also done by, like, Casilla Waste Management. They, they accommodate it, and if it's not done enough times, then it gets done more times per week. So, it's very low-impact and very quiet, and less...
Thank you.
Thank you, Harold.
Thanks.
Rick?
Good morning. Um, I appreciate how quickly and clearly and concisely you did your, uh, presentation. This is my favorite of the night.
If I could have flipped through those a little quicker, I could have done better.
I don't see much of a change from the original, so, I mean, it's actually a little, I think, a little nicer than what we were going for both. Thanks. You went down here, Nick?
I got one quick question. Um, architecture. I think we had a more, probably more thorough look at it last go-around. Uh, this go-around, while I know it's kind of minimal changes, and this could just, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. I don't like your sign, like, not even a little bit, and... What I viewed this property as an entirety, this looked like it was going to be, you know, quite a stunning development when you look at it in its entirety. I feel like that sign just seemed like an afterthought, and I think you could represent the entire project a little bit more consistently. If you're in love with that sign, I'm sorry, but that, like I said, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. I don't know if anyone up here feels the same way as me. I just feel like it lacks something.
Yeah, that's got to be you, buddy.
Yeah, uh, is there one particular sign that you're...
Both, I, I think, they look like they were kind of just slapped in graphically.
See, what we have here is that this is a, um, these are, these are, when you look in the interior of the building, those are kitchens. So, you get this big blank space up here, you know, and, uh, quite honest, uh, this name represents, uh, five decades of...
It's not the name.
Okay.
This is not the actual sign.
But we, we were thinking about getting rid of this one, yes.
Okay.
If that helps you.
I, and I don't know if it's because it's up on the building, it, it makes me think motel. If it was on a stone stand right next to your entrance that said the same thing, I, I, it just seems like...
Well, I, we, I, I, I kind of, had, my apology view was, I wanted to make sure people didn't think this was an hotel. I mean, I wanted to, to, them to know that it was an apartment building.
Like I said, beauty's in the eye of the beho-, I don't know if anyone up here feels the same way, but I had to say something. It did, it's the first thing I noticed when I looked at the architecture of this building.
You got it.
Uh, that's it, that was my, that was it.
Thanks, Nick.
That's all I wanted to know about.
Roger?
Well, I'm gonna let Sue, she wants to talk to the person.
Oh, yeah.
I just have a question regarding the trash bins. I'm kind of intrigued with this whole thing. So- These are gonna be commercial trash bins, but they're not gonna be a-
Yes, you take a standard town tote that's out in front of a residential house.
Yeah.
It's just a lot bigger and wider, so what, an individual comes up in a regular, normal trash truck, comes it out, wheels it out of the-
Yeah.
The designated area, and then hand delivers it. It- it's a little bit more expensive to do it that way as opposed to getting a dumpster fill, dumpster dump, but, uh, um, because they gotta make several trips, it's a little bit more labor-intensive.
All right, I- I'm just kind of curious, because we- we all, uh, as residents, um, residents, we all have two, uh, two bins.
Yep.
One for recycling and one for regular trash.
Yep.
But this is gonna be all, everyone, people, just gonna put everything in one bin?
Oh, no, there'll be-
I know there'll be multiple bins, but-
Fourteen or sixteen of them.
But they won't differentiate between recycling and trash?
Well, that's because it's private.
I'm sorry?
That's because it's private.
So you're not gonna provide any recycling?
No, we're saying-
It's all gonna be in one?
No, we- we pay a private rate.
No, never mind.
So, Casilla or someone else, they-
Yes, that's correct.
They do the separating part.
They do the picking.
Yes, they do. They do that part.
Okay, and you said it's only gonna be maybe a, maybe a dozen or sixteen of these?
Approximately sixteen.
Okay, all right. Um, I was just kind of curious about, you know, the, uh, recycling.
I get you, I get you. No, that's why we pay the big bucks.
Okay, and I- and I understand your reasoning behind not having a, um, you know, a, um, what do you have, big unit.
Well, they're- they're seven, eight-yard dumpsters and-
Yeah, um, why don't you touch upon, oh, I- another thing, too, is, what about, um, are you gonna have any area in this facility for people, uh, who order items online and get delivered? You know, like a, a secured area for package pickups and things like that?
You mean-
Uh, well, uh-
Most likely, you'll have to get, uh, visitors will have to get buzzed into the building, so there'll be a microphone, uh-
No, say somebody's not home, and somebody's ordering something online, you know, from Amazon or whatever it is.
Well, we have a wall system where there's a key system, where if there was a package, that package gets put into that larger box, and then that key gets put into their personal little mailbox.
Okay, so there- so there will be some accommodation?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I- I- I think-
Hey, if I don't offer the livability, people won't stay there.
No, I understand, but I- I think that as more people do shopping online and they get these packages delivered, um, there's a concern about just leaving them on, you know, either outside-
Yeah.
Or- or at, just outside their- their apartment door, you know?
Definitely.
So-
That's why, you know, if you've been to, like, uh, West Scarborough's mailbox down in the bookstore there, if you get a larger package, there's a key in your small box, that key opens up the big box.
Okay.
You can't take that key back out, so that opens up, and that- that box is about this big, so it takes big packages.
Okay, um, and why don't you just talk about the, um, where this, where there was gonna be snow storage in the original plans?
Mm-hmm.
And now there's not gonna be in that area, apparently. What's gonna happen to the snow?
And again, Roger, I thought we discussed this just a little bit, because what we had was, we were showing this area here. Snow- snow storage, excuse me, where are we? Right here. Now, we have a sidewalk, because again, this was where the building had been for the trash. Now we have a sidewalk going along the end to the- to the trash pot.
Yeah.
Again, how much snow we could have got in there would probably be debated to a certain degree.
Okay.
Uh, what we did discuss with Elliot, as you may recall, is down the street, down Stewart Drive, onto the left, he has a very big, basically, it's gonna be a field down there, um, that, you know, obviously, as snow is needed, he's part of the association. Everyone will be part of the association up there on an as-needed basis. That snow will be just trucked down the street a little bit and dumped in that- that area.
Um, so I imagine you have some sort of an, uh, an agreement or an arrangement with Elliot about all these different maintenance requirements and, um-
Yes, this association's all set up associated with that, but in terms of, I think they're all part of these, but it would have been submitted privately. Again, I didn't go back into that, to be perfectly honest with you, because we're just looking at that one building. Um, but he's part of, obviously, that association that takes care of all of the, uh, the parking lots and landscape areas that are on the top.
Okay, I'll let Sue handle the sign.
I actually am not gonna say anything about the sign. I- I- that's not true. I have to say something about the sign. I don't think this makes one difference one way or the other, but it isn't really a very classy thing to do, okay? Secondly, I really like this one over here. That's a different color. You see, what you're showing me on the- on the stand, it's clear, it's not the same color that I'm holding.
Yeah, I-
So, but you see, I wanna know which color I'm getting, because this is- this is definitely not giving the same kind of presentation that that is. This is a very boring building. Architecturally, it has nothing going for it at all. The only thing that it can have that will improve it would be a sense of a little bit of sophistication. And that coloring, in my book, is more sophisticated than- than this, the tones, whatever.
Susan, the, I- I think the printout that you may have, when you- when you send these back and forth-
Yep, which one- which one are you- which one are you in favor of, that one or this one?
It's like a desert sand beige color, um, with one contrasting tone to another.
I- Susan, I- I would really like to- to maybe touch on something that you just said, and, uh, these- these rents in here are gonna be starting at eight ninety-five.
Let me interrupt, because I should have gone to that point first.
Yes.
Okay? This looks to me as if it would be a wonderful opportunity for affordable housing.
Oh, it's market-rate affordable housing with no- with private funds.
True, but by offering single-bedroom space, you drop it down to something that people can actually think about affording, as opposed to other opportunities in Scarborough, and I think that that's something that we need very badly.
We, yes, I could very easily push this meeting past ten-thirty with giving you data on tenants.
No, I understand, but I think what you're doing, I hope you realize that I'm very enthusiastic about the fact that you're providing-
I am, too.
Smaller spaces.
And- and not only that, but for- for these tenants to be able to have the opportunity to be in an area that has a park where Elliot and Mr. Chamberlain is providing.
Exactly.
This is a goldmine for a tenant.
It is, so my comments on the architecture is just to try to make sure that it's, as much as we can without putting a financial burden on you, make it blend really well with what's there.
I'll give you a brief, just an absolute brief, brief.
Uh-huh.
Every ninety-three thousand dollars spent on this project of this size equals fifty dollars more per month per tenant. That will equal a dollar, and to have it at affordability, that equals a dollar sixteen more per hour this tenant has to make.
I'm making this-
And the entrance, entry level for this tenant, for the, for my eight ninety-fives, is fourteen dollars an hour.
I understand. It's color. It's not redesigning the building. It's color.
Okay.
It's, that's all it really is. It's just a matter of, that what's already been approved before it changed into, you know, you coming in.
Well, Mr. Chamberlain and I have talked about, 'cause he's building four, three units up front, to make sure that our colors match, you know, um, that are consistent.
I think I made my point. I'd be on that fine.
Okay.
But I really do want to make sure that you're aware that we should have more of this in- in Scarborough. I'm a, I am a big proponent of the fact that we need to do something, and I'm not talking about just talking, doing something.
Oh, absolutely.
About affordable housing.
There's not too many-
If you're willing to take that on, you deserve a lot of credit for that.
Well, thank you very much. There's not too many, uh, investors slash-
I understand.
Slash builders, slash developer, uh, and person that owns their management company. A few different hats there that-
No, we know.
Using the act combined.
One more quick note and then I'm done. Um, you're gonna read, you're gonna take the previously-approved landscaping and then just modify it a little so that it fits here, but you make sure you actually create a new landscaping plan.
Uh, we wrote, Susan, and I will get that to staff, absolutely, yes, and again, and I just didn't wanna go through that exercise. Obviously, we came here and, can we move this, can we slide that, because, like I say, it's really gonna be taking that landscaping and just-
We did that with garbage, so we don't have to do it with our-
Yes, I know.
Anyway, thank you. I'm all set.
Thanks. Uh, I think, Jay, did you still have something?
Yeah, I actually did just have a question that popped in my mind, actually, at the outset of your presentation. Remember when the building was first approved, one of the things that was talked about with- with regards to air handling units and those sorts of things was they were actually gonna be on the roof?
Ooh.
Um, and I don't know that I've heard that discussion or seen on the plan yet, where those are gonna be located, um-
AC units, we're talking, Jay?
Uh, I think it was, uh, there was just, the host and mechanics were gonna be on the roof, as I remember it was gonna be sort of a faux, you know, it was gonna be almost a mansard roof previously.
Yeah, there is no-
And when you showed the-
Yeah, there's no AC in this building.
Okay.
There'd be an individual thing.
Okay.
Um, it's, once again, do you want AC, when you get into that affordable category, do you wanna pay fifty dollars a month, especially during the winter, to have some AC?
And I guess the reason I was asking the question was, if there are gonna be any ground-mounted units, if there's any transformer pads that aren't currently located, if there's anything like that, actually, you brought up your, um, uh, the mailbox is, you know, sounds like a great idea, so where's that located?
In our lobby.
That's in the lobby, okay, so.
Yep, yep.
Oh, heating units?
Heating, right, the heating-
They're inside our utilities room-
Okay.
That are attached to the back of the building.
What about tanks? Is, what's it running on?
The tanks are underground.
Those are the propane tanks.
That's one of the re-
See those?
All right.
Okay, and so that was really the question, was any of these mechanicals that, if there is gonna be anything typically wanted-
The air exchange unit, the air exchange unit is done through the bathroom fan, so.
No, that's a good point, and I hadn't hit that upon, on my letter at all, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
So, picking up on the, on that question, I'm glad you- you did raise it, um, when you say, um, that air conditioning would be an individual thing, are you talking about, like, people putting, uh, units in their windows, or- or how, what are you, what are you envisioning there?
No, it would clearly state in our lease that it'd be a floor mount with just the- just the little strip that goes on the bottom.
Okay, all right. Um, and again, I, as Susan said, I think we appreciate and understand the importance of this kind of, you know, naturally occurring affordable housing, so to speak.
Well, a little bit of, um, uh, you know, thanks also needs to go to Mr. Chamberlain for the opportunity to, for our- our concept, you know, me and my family's concept, to come into his- his concept, and he obviously could have gone in a different direction with luxury and high-end and this and that, and so I think these tenants are gonna really, really be happy. Uh, fifty percent of my tenants have stayed with me for more than twelve years, so.
Great. So in that vein, then, and I, you know, I- I get a little uncomfortable sometimes when we get overly prescriptive and, um, really subjective things like color and signage, and there are certain things that, um, certain things that we need to make sure we enforce in terms of design standards, particularly in certain districts for certain types of buildings. Um, we have sort of campus-type settings where we wanna try to make sure we're tying things in reasonably. Um, this- this one is a little, you know, a little bit in that direction in that, you know, you're sort of buying in, so to speak, into a- into a pre-approved area, and I- I do appreciate that you, it sounds like you're making, you've made that effort with Mr. Chamberlain to try and tie things in and have it be complimentary, um, you know, I, if, I'd appreciate, and I know the board will appreciate if you'll, you'll continue to think hard about color choices and things like that, and think about signage. I personally don't wanna, again, get overly prescriptive on that. Um, it's ultimately sort of subjective. Um, and I don't, I don't feel comfortable substituting my judgment for anyone else's on those sorts of things, um, at least in a case like this, so. Um, uh, that said, um, you know, we'll, we'll, I appreciate the willingness to continue to look at that and to provide the, uh, the new landscaping plan. I'm not gonna say anything about trash bins, 'cause I think we've covered that one very well. Um, and with that, um, you know, we do have a- a motion here that I would like to put forward for- for conditional approval. Um, I move to approve the project titled Dunston Village Residential, Building H5, proposed by Burnham Brookside LLC, as depicted on plan set prepared by Sebago Technics dated October ninth, twenty seventeen, with the following findings and conditions. Findings as stated, uh, conditions, number one, prior to issuance of the building permit, the plan set- plan sets shall be revised to include, A, the correct number of proposed parking spaces, B, a revised landscaping plan which coordinates with the storm drain system, C, a detailed description, including color renderings of the proposed fence being used to screen the trash collection area, D, approval by the Scarborough Sanitary District is required, and E, revised plan notation to ensure consistency in referencing types of units, which gets to what we-
Oh, the note, yes, 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 good.
Uh, and the second condition, prior to the start of construction, a pre-construction meeting is required. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. That's the motion.
Looking for a second?
I am looking for a second.
You got it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time tonight.
Last but not least, item number ten, Pine Point Animal Hospital requests a site plan review for twelve Pine Point Road, assessors map U thirty-four, lot twenty-two A.
Yep, like I mentioned, Chair, as you just know, this is a site plan amendment, um, for an addition to the existing animal hospital on Pine Point Road. Um, it's actually a seven hundred and twenty-square-foot plus-or-minus addition, um, which incorporates, uh, it's sort of, it's replacing a few parking spaces, and then there's some other parking lot modifications to accommodate. Um, staff did note in our, in our, uh, plan, or in our comments, I should say, that the original site was approved in oh-five, and is actually contemplated for, in addition of a similar size to this, on the backside of the building, on the, um, uh, opposite side that's being proposed currently, um, and so they're before you to actually, um, uh, do the addition in the front. So as I noted, you should have received not only planning staff comments, but comments from Woodard and Kern as well. Um, one of the main elements in staff comments that we don't have an answer to yet is that our commercial code and fire inspector wants to be sure that there's adequate access for an emergency vehicle to get in and around the site, um, and we haven't seen, um, uh, any response to that one yet, which I'm sure they're, uh, prepared to speak to tonight. Um, other comments we referenced have to do with sort of landscape details in terms of coordinating, uh, you know, sort of some existing features that are in front of the building, uh, maybe mimicking those or trying to echo, echo what's there. And there is, uh, actually, one proposed new parking spot that looks like it would, uh, displace an existing tree, and is there an opportunity to either relocate or replace that tree, um, 'cause it does seem to provide some buffering and aesthetics to budding properties. And then the other main element is just ensuring that, uh, we did receive the, uh, the elevations of the structure, but being sure that the materials are consistent. They generally look consistent, but we just, they weren't noted on the plans. That'd be the same siding and same roof type, so, um, just wanna be sure that that is all coordinated, 'cause again, this falls under sort of that renovations and additions provisions of our design standards. Um, again, uh, you have a host of comments from us, and with that, I turn it back to you, Chair.
Thanks, Jay, and I'll turn it over to the African representative.
Hello, my name is Paul Moniak. I'm civil engineer, and I work with WBRC Architects Engineers. It is a pleasure to be here at Scarborough. Uh, this is my first time before this planning board. Um, I did receive the comments. We are working on written responses that we will provide to you. However, we didn't want to rush those to you and have them show up the night of the meeting. Um, and I'd rather just stand here and explain them to you, and I will follow up with that written, uh, response. Um, so, as it was stated, this project is a small addition. The building's two thousand square feet. This is seven hundred and twenty square feet. The addition is to increase the functionality of the actual animal hospital. It will not increase the amount of patients, nor will it increase the amount of employees. It just simply adds to what they already do. Um, I do have a floor plan here. Uh, I can pass this around, as well as I have a large one here I can show and talk with you. Uh, basically- Basically, the addition is on the west side of the plan that you see here, uh, with the front entrance being at this location. Uh, the addition is a restroom and a break room on one side, surgery prep adjacent to the current surgery room, and the addition of an office for the veterinarians that are there. There's also an increase in the workroom. Uh, so as you can see, the exam rooms remain, reception, waiting rooms, all of that's unchanged. Uh, and as was stated, we have an elevation as well, I have submitted that. This floor plan was not developed at the time, uh, to a point where I was satisfied for submission, so that's why it has been developed at this time. The idea is that this building replicates more of a house than it does a commercial building. Uh, with that said, the addition is going to mimic exactly the house in terms of the finishes, uh, the siding, the asphalt shingles, and the windows, therefore it will look like it was always there once they're complete with this addition. So, that was the first comment in terms of site plan submission, the floor plan. The next one, the internal vehicle circulation, the site turnaround and access. Again, because of the location of this addition, as you can see, parking was displaced, paved parking areas, and so we wanted to maintain the same number of parking spaces for this facility because they work for the applicant, they do exceed the ordinance requirement. So in order to put this addition, we had to relocate some parking spaces, and that's what you see here in terms of what's happening. So in terms of turnaround, we will certainly, um, discuss this with the emergency personnel. The, the access in does not really change, uh, there is a small area here in the back for a hammerhead, I don't know that you can have a fire truck turn around there, but smaller emergency vehicles can certainly use that. I will note, again, that the parking exceeds the required number and that there are some spaces that are always available. Um, part of what happens is when there's snow removal, uh, the snow is piled up in some of those parking spaces, so they've accounted for that. The other, some of the other comments, landscaping and buffering, uh, is certainly our plan as this being an amended plan, we do not want to alter the landscape if we can, however, there is a row of bushes along this edge of the building. The idea is to replicate those along the new, um, proposed addition. I don't believe we'll be able to transplant because they are quite large and I'm not sure they would take. Um, and the same with this tree, we're afraid that we are, have disrupted the root system too much for it to actually stay. If it can, we'll keep it, if not, we have all intentions of replacing that tree. So I just wanted to make that clear that, uh, we are absolutely going to do that. And then the other part about landscaping that falls into the rip wrap, uh, along the back here, there is a swale, and it's a steep slope off the back of the building. Because we're disturbing this area as we dig the hole for the foundation, um, the best way is to have the slope stabilization with the rip wrap and get that back, and it will match the rest of that rip wrap there. So that's really the, the reason for that rip wrap, as well as, um, this, I can get into more when we get to the stormwater aspect of it. The, uh, I wanted to note, I think it, the, the note was that we show a decrease in peak flow rate, um, so I just wanted to reiterate, we're not showing an increase in the peak flow rate, um, and that the channel that is there is established and the flows are handled there, um, and the impervious area that is increased is, um, basically the parking was replaced with building in this area, and the increase is over here, and that runs down a small channel into this low lying area behind the building. Um, that actually increases the time of concentration for that stormwater to reach that lower area. And then in, in terms of the sizing of the rip wrap, the idea is to maintain what's already there and match what's there for rip wrap. Uh, we didn't provide size and calculations, but a lot of those rocks are in the eight to twelve inch size, which is what we standard typically do, um, and we would do the same. Uh, we can certainly provide calculations if that's required, um, but again, showing that it works now in the existing conditions will maintain that. The roof drainage was a comment as well, this entire roof is pitched and it drips off onto the landscaped area here and the rip wrap in the back, there are no gutters, there's no internal drains or external roof drains. Uh, this new addition will be the same, it will just drip onto the land and run down into the low lying areas, um, so that's the clarification there. Uh, existing foundation drain, um, again, this is an amended site plan, my company did not do the initial plan, uh, and in terms of as-built, um, there's limited information, but we do know that, um, we've seen a pipe back here, um, and we believe that tying into the foundation drain, it will connect and exit in the same location. There's really no opportunity out front for, um, connection, so that's the plan there. The, um, there was a comment about needing approval from the sanitary district, um, I guess I can, I can talk later with staff about that, but we are not proposing to increase any stormwater flow because there are no new employees or, um, actual, uh, clients. Uh, we are adding a restroom, but it will be used by the same number of people, so, um, if we need to, we can certainly talk with the sanitary district about that. Um, we do, uh, we, we noticed a comment about the dumpster fencing, the dumpster has been in place, um, but we are more than happy to provide a dumpster fence, and we do have all the erosion control as well as the dumpster fence. Um, basically, it's what my company typically uses, which is a six-foot fence. We tend to go with cedar stockade on a metal frame, um, the PVC plastic looks nice, but in a commercial application, when it's cold, it tends to break and, and splay, and it does not look good in a few years, whereas this more, um, wood stockade will take a beating and still look fairly nice. But we can certainly alter that if anyone feels the need to do something different. Like I said, we, because this is going to be a hole for foundations only and we are minimal disruption, um, we have placed some silt fence around the back, I don't know how much of that will, will reach there, um, the idea is to pour foundations, backfill, this is a slab on grade type of construction, uh, we do have infiltration silt fence, um, in the catch basins as well, uh, and I have a detail for that. These are all depth management practices from the main DEP manual, and, um, we have all the other construction details here available, ready to, uh, provide to the town for their use. Uh, real quick, touching on the Woodard and Kern comments, um, they have similar comments on details, which we now have, the drainage for the roof, which I just touched on, erosion sediment control, uh, not only do we have the details, but I have a sheet on the front here, which is general notes to the contractor, and these all come from the main DEP manual, as well as, um, I have, uh, basic standards, narrative that I can provide as well. And then there was also a comment about the, um, condition of the current stormwater, and if maybe this is an opportunity to, um, provide maintenance, we can certainly do that. Again, it's rip wrap, what happens is the water, um, reaches this area, it's allowed to build up somewhat before it overflows and goes down. Uh, in terms of the peak flow increase, we raised the amount of water that can be stored in that area before it's discharged by increasing the elevation of that, so, um, while they're there, they can certainly pull out the old rip wrap, clean it out and place, replace with new rip wrap if, if that's what is deemed necessary. So at this time, I, I would like to just open it up to your questions, and I'd love to answer those for you.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna go on a limb and say there's no public comment.
[laughing]
Probably not. All right, um, well, I appreciate the, uh, we all appreciate the concise kind of point-by-point review of staff comments, it's always helpful, and thanks for sticking around and waiting to the end here.
Yeah, if I, if I could add one more thing, I just, just to make it clear, um, it looks like there's a number of waiver requests, and really, it's as I was filling out the checklist, um, because it's an amendment of a previous site plan, we didn't want to, um, have it just be an exercise of reproducing paperwork that you may already have on file, we could certainly do that if you need to, but we felt we could just state that that information is on file or it, you know, is, is not necessarily a, because it is just a building addition, we didn't necessarily, um, want to get into those kinds of paperwork items.
Sure, yeah, and it sounds like you are generally pretty aware of those items that you need to continue to work with staff on, and I'm sure we may have, um, a couple of specific questions here, but-
Sure.
Who do you want to go first? Just putting it up for grabs at this point. Susan?
Um, the present space is maintained very nicely. I was a little concerned the first time, for the first change, but it worked out really well, I have no doubt that this will work out really well. Here's a little ho-ho, if you look at this, there are six places to examine, I assume it's dogs, and one cat exam and cat waiting area.
I noticed that.
Now, I've got three cats, if I bring them, it doesn't matter, I just thought it was kind of funny, it's labeled for cats.
You could look at it as a cat an easier client, maybe?
Or more difficult. Okay, um, landscaping around the new addition, are we going to be doing it, we are removing whatever is there now, I, I can't figure out what it was, but there was something that's going to be taken out and-
Yeah, I looked at the pictures, um, it was hard for me to determine exactly what that bush is, it's some sort of deciduous bush, um, I'm not sure if it was like a butterfly bush or something like that, but-
Do you put something back?
Yes, we will absolutely, um, put something back.
Okay.
Uh, the doctors who main, or who own this facility are very prideful of, of their facility, and I'm sure-
Okay, that's good, and I'm sure that you will replace the tree if you can.
Yes.
That would be great.
I always like to try and keep it if I can because you cannot-
I know.
-replace the maturity, but-
But, you know, we are, if we're nothing, if not, we're really careful about landscaping. I think that most of the other questions you, you answered quite nicely for me, I'm gonna wait and see how the stormwater management comes up because I don't have to think about stormwater management on this, on this board, it's wonderful. Um, I don't think I have any other problems, thank you.
Thank you. Roger?
I don't really have, uh, so much to say, I think, um, I think the staff brought up a number of, um, areas to be, to be considered, and it seems to me that you've considered those, and you're, you're desponding to those, so I don't, I mean, I went down and looked at the place and it was pretty good to me, um, I don't think it was quite much of a big disruption as to what they're gonna be doing based on the existing operations, so I'm fine with it.
All right, thank you. Nick?
Yeah, I just want to say, um, I'm okay with all the waiver requests, um, that are listed in here, uh, unless staff feels it's necessary to request something in particular, all right, but most of this really is applicable to figure newer projects where you're just doing an addition, so. Um, my other question for you would be, can a fire truck actually turn around in your spot now?
I don't believe it can, no.
So we're really not changing anything on that front, right?
No.
Yeah, okay, that's it.
All right, next, next. Robin?
Yeah, so I was wondering why you didn't have an erosion and sedimentation control plan, you know, but I guess you're kind of addressing it now.
Sure.
Um, but also in the checklist, you said that you didn't need to provide one?
Um, if I did, that was by mistake.
Okay.
I always provide sediment erosion control. Uh, we are basically digging a hole, and I don't imagine too much will get offsite, but there will be stockpiles of material, so the contractor will need to be cognizant of it.
And maybe it can stabilize and start an entrance and things like that.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so talk to me about the stormwater feature that you currently have, is it just a detention area and it's all rip wrap?
Right, we, because, um, it's such a small site, we're not subjected to any sort of, um, DEP, whether that be the, uh, stormwater or the, the slota, uh, so we're really just required to meet the peak runoff that the town requires.
Right.
Um, what was in place was basically, um, I, I believe it's retention in that it holds the water back and then it slowly leaks out through the rip wrap and continues down the swale. It can hold a certain volume of water from what we could detect from the contours that are there, uh, so the increase in flow, we increased the volume that could be retained in that rip wrap bowl before it's released, um, downstream. The other part, as I was mentioning, um, we displaced impervious area and added new impervious area, but the building, uh, the time of concentration off the roof down and into that back swale was increased, as well as where that impervious area, it has to run across the front lawn, down the ditch and into the rip wrap. So when we ran the model, and I do have hydrocath calculations-
Yeah, no, I saw it.
I will certainly, yeah.
No, I saw it in the back, that you-
But, so it was, it was more of a time of concentration, and it's such a small change, it's, when you do the modeling, it doesn't necessarily reflect it, but-
Yeah, and I, the one thing I, I just wanted to, um, ensure too, is when you were talking about that time of concentration across, I don't know if the back lawn or the front lawn, kind of a thing in there, but, um, that's gonna maintain like lawn or be vegetated and everything?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, right, um, we were able to kind of get that parking in there with minimal impact again, because it is fairly flat from the front out to the road, uh, so we can kind of just place that impervious area for that new parking and, um-
Yeah, and thank you for touching on one of the questions I had too, which were about all the waiver requests that you have in here that, you know, for example, did you say you're gonna have a waiver request from your signage because there's no new sign that's proposed?
Yeah, it's, it's the one that's there, we'll maintain, and there's nothing new going up, so.
Okay, so I would just maybe elaborate.
Elaborate, sure, okay.
Yep, just a little bit because we're not necessarily wanting to give out all these waivers, kind of a thing.
Okay, yeah, sure, absolutely.
And I, and I can assure you that, you know, the landscaping plan is something that my colleagues will, and myself will want to see as well. Traffic analysis, I know you said that, you know, traffic analysis, and I think this is also related a little bit to the Scarborough Sanitary District approval. I know that you're saying that it's the same number of people who work there and it's a similar number of clients, but to me, it seems like the clients are going to increase because if you have more exam and surgery rooms, kind of a thing, there may be an increase in both sanitary and traffic, so, just a thought there.
Okay.
But, um, overall, I, I think, um, it's great to have a, a local business be as successful as they are to, to do this kind of expansion.
Right, absolutely.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Sure, thank you. Thanks, Robin. Rachel?
Yeah, I, I noted that there was only one exam room for cats, but at least the cat got the window. The, uh, it makes them a little happier. Um, I do have just a caution on that removal of the tree to put in an extra parking space, uh, and that when I've been accustomed to drive in there to park in the first available space that's currently there, it's a very tight turning radius-
Yes, it is.
-and, and it's not easy to get into, and you're proposing an even tighter turning radius for that extra, extra site.
Yeah.
Uh, so you're gonna have cars out there that are kind of doing three-point turns and jockeying back and forth, or in my case, a nine-point turn trying to get in there. Uh, so I just, um, I just say, you know, kind of take a look at that because it really is a kind of tight area and it does take down a very nice tree.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I, one of the things I should point out is, um, when I was speaking with the owners of the facility, uh, they had mentioned that the, the ones closer to the, the front door are so important because, uh, a lot of times people bring in animals that are injured and they want to get in as soon as they can, and, and that, that animal is frazzled a little bit so that the quicker they can get from their car. So that's kind of why they really were pushing for that spot, but I agree, it's, it's a very difficult one to get into, so, um, if that's the case, maybe, maybe people won't use it, so.
That's it? Rick?
Um, I think it looks good, I like that they actually have the surgery prep area because a lot of places don't have, so, that's just a comment on that. Um, yeah, oh, no, I have nothing, I think it looks fine, good.
Yeah, I'm pretty much in the same boat, um, don't really have anything to add beyond what fellow board members have already said, uh, got some good clarification on a couple of things, look into the emergency access question, um, maybe sort of continued conformance there, but we'll see. Um, and again, yeah, I agree, it's, it's a, it's a great local business and, um, I'm glad to see that it's being exp-
expanded in a thoughtful way. And I did appreciate the opportunity to look at the floor plans, just to give us a little fuller picture of what it is that's happening there. And as you can see, we pay attention to detail when it comes to the labeling on those things. And thanks again for the sort of running through things, including little details like the dumpster fencing and so forth. So, beyond that, you obviously have more homework to do, and we'll look forward to seeing it next time.
Okay, great. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Good job. Do we have a planner's staff report?
I do not have anything to report. Angela, do you have any to touch on?
No.
Okay. Administrative amendment report?
I do not believe we've gotten any administrative approval the last couple of weeks.
I concur.
All right, that's good.
Do not remember any. Any planning board correspondence beyond the email that we referenced earlier? No?
Actually, if I might, just one thing I want, I was asked to pass on to the board. George Kerr and his daughter Ashley Kerr own a piece of property on Route 1, sort of just beyond the Blue Point Road, if you will. If you're heading out of town, it'd be on the left-hand side. It's a commercial lot. They are likely to be coming to this board in the near future for a, excuse me, for a site plan review, and presumably, they're looking for approval. But he did mention that he wanted to start clearing some of the trees ahead of time. We had, there's nothing in our ordinance that says you can't clear trees. I did tell him that you can't sort of regrade the site in any way, but he wanted to let the board know that if you do send the activity down there, and an application comes forward, he's not trying...
No wetlands.
What's that?
No wetlands.
He's, there's no, he's not in the resource protection, and he's not gonna be disturbing wetlands of greater than 4,300 square feet. So, you know, he's made aware that, you know, typically, you know, we, like I said, anyone who owns a lot can clear trees. And so, he just wanted to let this board know that that's likely to occur before he comes before you, and so, he perfectly within his rights to do that, but he felt it was important to let you know that that was occurring. So, that was it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Susan?
I'll take a couple of seconds to say that I feel badly that I didn't talk to this applicant about how pleased I was with his, I'm gonna call it affordable housing effort, before talking about the architecture, because that was not nearly as important as the fact that he's actually taking it upon himself to do something that I really don't think anybody in Scarborough has ever really done before. And I am, I volunteer at Project Grace, and as you may know, we deal a lot with people who need a lot of help, even though we're not a crisis line. And the number of times that I have to say I cannot help you with anything that has to do with housing, it's painful. It's really, really painful, especially in a town like Scarborough that's got so many resources. So, I'm personally going to be looking for more ways to encourage affordable housing. I'm sure that when the comp plan, people come back, that they're going to have things to say about affordable housing. But I just think that as a board, it doesn't hurt to publicly state that we know this is an issue, and we would like to have anybody who's got any ideas about what we might be able to do about that to come and talk to us. And I'm looking forward to a site walk with Bessie. Thank you.
I agree about the affordable housing, and partly because we often end up talking about it when it's a requirement, when it's either after the fact, or it's a built-in requirement for something, which can serve a purpose, but when there are opportunities to facilitate different types of housing stock that can be more kind of naturally affordable, I think that's good, too. And yes, we look forward to scheduling our site walk.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up. Probably gonna be fairly aggressive about trying to get that site walk established within the next week to 10 days, to take advantage of both weather and diminishing daylight, and the fact that I know the applicant's probably gonna want to get back before you pretty quickly as well, so.
Right.
We will, Jamel and I will work to put out a doodle bowl or some such thing that gives you multiple options, so.
All right. Good. Roger?
Angela, won't forgive me if I don't mention the transportation committee. Last Thursday evening, we had a three-hour meeting.
Record breaker.
And we discussed the Pine Point intersection, you know, East Grand intersection there, down where the garage barbecue is. Pretty exhaustive discussion about what, you know, was going on down there, the planning. And then we spent the other half of the time on the first phase of 114, Glum Road, going up to Main Flav Avenue, discussing right-turn lanes, left-turn lanes, dedicated lanes, and things like that. I'm really, I'm so impressed with that committee, because they really do a lot of in-depth analysis and discussions, and it's occurred to me that this rather small committee has a pretty significant impact on the community, and I hope the community pays attention to what's going on.
Thank you.
It's my two cents.
All right. Thanks, Roger. Anyone else? All right, I've moved to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you.